Board of Aldermen to order on Monday, December-
Party inside!
Jeff, can everybody be muted except for me?
Called it.
Okay, start over. I'm gonna call the special meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Monday, December 21st, 2020 at 7:00 PM via teleconference. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Sue Lovering, and Alderman Schmidt will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As President of the Board of Aldermen, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4, this body, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. To access Zoom, please refer to the agenda or the city's website for the meeting link. To join by phone, dial 1-929-205-6099. The meeting ID is 861-2992-1518. The passcode is 510915. The public may also view the meeting via TV Channel 16. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings. Instructions have also been provided on the City of Nashua's website at Nashua-NH.gov and publicly noticed at City Hall and the Nashville Public Library. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or Channel 16, please call 603-821-2049, and they will help you connect. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during the meeting, which is required under the right-to-know law. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
I am present. I can hear the proceedings, and I'm home alone.
Alderman Clea.
I am here. I can hear the proceedings, and I am alone.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I'm here. I can hear everyone, and I am in this room alone.
Alderman Dowd.
I'm present. I can hear the proceedings, and I'm here alone practicing social distancing.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, I am here. I can hear everyone, and I am alone in my room.
Alderman Clemmons.
I am here. I am alone by myself, and I can hear everything.
Alderman Lopez.
I'm here. I can hear and see everybody, and I'm home alone due to social distancing guidelines. Thanks.
Alderman Tenza.
I'm present. I can hear everyone, and I am alone.
Alderwoman Lou. Alderman Jettie.
I'm here. I'm alone. I can hear the proceedings.
Alderman Schmidt.
I am present. I can hear everyone, and I'm alone in this room.
Alderman Laws.
I'm here. I'm alone, and I can hear you.
Alderman Cleaver.
I'm here. I'm alone, and I can hear the proceedings.
Alderman Harriet Gathroy.
I am present. I am alone in this room, and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Wiltshire.
I'm here. I'm alone, and I can hear everyone.
You have 14 in attendance.
Thank you. Also in attendance this evening is Mayor Donches and Deputy Corporation Counsel Dorothy Clark. Communications.
Communication has been received from Lori Wiltshire, President of the Board of Aldermen, calling a Special Board of Aldermen meeting to discuss ordinance 2044 relative to a ban on certain outdoor activities for certain businesses starting at 9:30 PM.
There being no objection, I will accept the communication and place it on file. So for those of you in attendance this evening, we are going to allow for public comment. We will allow each person three minutes. And please, if you don't have to repeat something that's already been said, if you have something new to offer, we're glad to hear you. But I'm gonna have to keep everyone to three minutes because it looks like we have 98 people on the call this evening. So period for public comment. Is there anyone wishing to give public comment?
Laura Cahoon.
Ms. Cahoon, name an address for the record, please.
My name is Laura Cahoon, and I live at 30 Greenwood Drive. I'm asking the board members to vote no on this. First of all, I think it's been put together, I'm gonna say half-assed, only because if you look at the agenda, number one, they put the meeting ID for the people joining by phone incorrectly. Also, the communication says for certain outdoor activities, and then the ordinance says for indoor activities. So really, we don't even know what you people want to do, except to restrict our movement after 9:30. I think this is ridiculous, and if you have Walmart, Target, and all these other stores open, and if you go to their parking lot, you have a lot of Massachusetts people. And to put a restricting on us, we are not children, we are adults. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to give comment?
Beth Skare.
Beth?
Hi. My name's Beth Skare, 111 East Hobart Street. I sent an email to the Board of Aldermen, which was a memo from Tim Cummings to Bobby Bagley, and I'm asking all the Aldermen to please read it if you haven't already. And I also, you know, I just would like you to vote against it. I don't even think it was properly drafted. I don't know if Steve Bolton has had a look at it. It seems rather tenuous. And so please vote against it. Please save our businesses. I really think they deserve better. Thank you. Bye.
Anyone else?
Kurt Mathias, Boston Billiard Club.
Kurt, you're up.
Thank you, Chairman, Chairwoman. I apologize. I want to vote against this, want you to vote against this, simply because it is not going to help the spread of COVID-19. I don't believe it's gonna spread the spread of COVID-19. We have 171 employees that work at Boston Billiard Club. If this goes through when you vote yes tomorrow, there's over 100 people that are gonna go out of work tomorrow. We have no work for them if that happens. Please use common sense and do what you can to vote to make this work. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
Lael Kent.
Okay. Name an address for the record, please.
My name is Lael Kent. I live in Connecticut, but I work at Boston Billiards for Kurt.
Okay.
So I understand the need for doing it at 9:30 because that's when people start to drink and they start to not listen or not use common sense, is what I'm assuming why they're doing it at 9:30, etc. But I think it's important to take things on a case-by-case basis. I live right next to Foxwoods and Mohegan Sun, and they are doing a horrible job at keeping people in line. And if you've ever been to Boston Billiards, the employees there are doing an incredible job of making sure everything's wiped down before anybody else sits, wiping down the tables all the time, and making sure people wear masks to the point of, you know, you'll get customers that berate some of the employees, and they just take it with a grain of salt. I think they're doing an amazing job, especially considering other places. I think it should be focused more on punishing the places that aren't taking this seriously. Kurt's already shut it down twice, you know, to keep us healthy. You know, we all want to make money. We all want to keep our economy going, but at the same time, it's useless if you don't have your health. But he's taken that twice, two times he's done that, and there are other places that don't. I think it should focus more on punishing the places that don't take it seriously, as opposed to making everybody take a loss. That was my two cents.
Okay, thank you.
Can I?
Who's next?
Can I go?
Eric Roberts.
I have Jim Rafferty.
Yes, sorry, I don't want to cut off the other gentleman. Thank you for the time. I appreciate everybody, everything everybody does. Kurt and Boston Billiards is correct. It's gonna hurt the charities. And the two charity gaming facilities, it's gonna hurt the workers. I have workers come to me every day and say, you know, I can't do, I can't buy the food for my family without this, and it's gonna hurt the businesses. I think the science, I've been talking to many of you and telling you about the science, and passing around a New York Times article that questions the science of whether this is gonna hurt. Not that I believe in the Board of Health, but there's real questions of whether the science is correct on this matter. And, you know, we at The River, we've really taken this seriously, take everybody's temperature, added all sorts of expense to make sure the place is safe, cleaning every day. All, everything's, everything is going full speed to try to make this environment as safe as possible, and it would be a shame if the Aldermanic group turned that off. Now, the other thing is, if you just shut down Nashua, there are other choices for charity gaming facilities around the state, and other people will go to other places. It would be extremely, I think, unfair just to close down this city. I know it's well-intentioned, but I would close with saying, one, I don't think this Aldermanic group, and I appreciate what all you guys do, and you should not confuse activity with accomplishment on this one. Just doing something might have a negative effect that overwhelms the positive effect you're doing. Please don't confuse activity with accomplishment. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. Heather Hadad.
Eric Roberts.
Okay, you'll be next, Eric.
Thank you. Daniel Webster Highway in Nashua. I own Louis Louis. Not yet?
Not yet. I called on Heather Hadad. You can speak after Heather.
That is me. My name is Heather Hadad. I have worked at the Boston Billiard Club and Casino for Kurt for the last 10 years. I am a single mother in Nashua, so as many of you know, the school districts are currently fully remote. I am home homeschooling my daughter Monday through Friday from 9:00 AM until 2:30 PM. If we do implement the curfew in Nashua, then most likely Kurt will have to minimize the shifts to one shift a day, as we'll be closing at 9:30, and there really isn't gonna be need for more than one bartender on during the day as business already has naturally declined because of COVID and people taking the precautions and not feeling comfortable going out, which I think is fine. But with that being said, if I am expected to be home homeschooling my child, and I know I'm not the only one in this position, that means that it's going to drastically limit, or limit if not completely eliminate my ability to go into work and earn my income to then be able to pay my bills. If I also during the day am supposed to be home homeschooling my child, the appeal and the ability of working at night-
Mine case is on there, so I can't.
Has been able to allow me the availability to then work after my child is, you know, out of school, whatever, and I'm home during the day with her. As I said, business has already steadily declined because of the COVID currently. The first sign of outbreaks within employees, Kurt took the measures to, out of good conscience, close down, have the health board come in, go through the building, find out where the roots of the issues were. Upon going into work, I have to take a survey about my health and answer all the questions. I then can be allowed access into the building. Once I then do so, I get my temperature taken. After I get my temperature taken, masks are required the entire time throughout my shift. We can't eat our food and take our breaks within the building. We're asked to go to our cars just so that we aren't unmasked while we are in the building. I mean, realistically, at this point, I really think it comes down, like other people have spoken about, to personal accountability of the businesses. I think the businesses should be responsible for, you know, independent responsibility of their employees and ensuring the safety of their patrons. If the curfew is implemented, it's genuinely going to make it nearly impossible for me to earn my own income. I'm not gonna be able to pay my bills, and if that happens, I just, I don't know what I'm supposed to be able to do after that point. It's going to be absolutely devastating, where after we shut down in the spring, the savings that I did have has slowly but surely completely been depleted. The season, the holiday season is normally where we would make a majority of the money that I would then be able to re-up my savings, but if we then again have to face another closing or face a curfew, I'm not gonna be able to make ends meet. I'm not gonna be able to pay my bills. I'm, it's gonna be absolutely detrimental. So I just, I hope that we can find other options. I hope that we can come up with another conversation to implement other guidelines and restrictions. But if a business, if the businesses are currently implementing the guidelines the best that they can, and we're going above and beyond, and we're trying to keep everyone safe, I really, I think the curfew is just gonna do more damage than good to myself and a majority of others in the industries that are gonna be impacted as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Hi. Sorry, I'm muted for a minute. Heather, I just appreciate you so much, and speaking your truth, it means a lot, and it's a good point to make. I want to-
Name a record, please.
Oh. Giobonia. I live at 5 Hopey Drive. I am Director of Events and Partnerships at Boston Billiard Club and Casino in Nashua. So a couple points I want to make. A lot of people are going to speak on the fact that this could shutter businesses, and I don't want to shy away from that. The fact that there's been some people toying with the idea that after 9:30, as a charitable gaming facility, we could survive without food and beverage sales is naive. And I've crunched numbers. I've done spreadsheets. I've looked at the numbers. We've looked at them. It won't happen, not for us. We couldn't do it. It's unrealistic. I mean, I know charities get 35% of our charitable gaming revenue, and I've heard people say they should get more. They do get more because we handle the overhead, and the overhead of the payroll and everything is very, very deep. So without food and beverage, it would be impossible, never mind the risk, that, I mean, anybody in the industry will tell you that if you want to stay open as a dry business where people can't drink, right now, we don't allow people to go to their cars. They would go to their cars. We would have zero control over them. And we can't say you can't have a water. You can't have a coffee. They're gonna have to be allowed at that point to go to their cars, and we don't know what they're doing. So that's important to think about. Charitable gaming will not survive. And many, many, many people in the community rely on us, and I pride myself on that. I, we want to be there for them. It's one of the most rewarding parts of the job. We do employ 170 people, and frankly, I'm Director of Events and Partnerships. If this happens, I wouldn't have a job. And to be honest, if, if me having to find another career, another job, meant that we saved lives, and I actually believe that, then I would entertain it. I absolutely would. I'm not a monster. I care about lives more than I care about even me making a living or having a roof over my head. But there's no science that anyone can give me that is behind it. And never mind that, we are severely let down by the community if they want to pull the rug out from underneath us because nobody has implemented a backup plan. No one has any resources to keep us alive or my staff alive or surviving. It's kind of like, we're gonna do this, and you're gonna have to figure it out on your own, and that's not fair. And I will stick up for my team. We do everything we can. I want, I want people to be held accountable, and I'll stand behind that all day. I mean, I, I don't want to be put with the same batch of bad apples. I don't. And we're prepared to make concessions, but doing a 9:30 curfew, I don't want anybody to be confused about what it means. You will be closing businesses, and livelihoods will be lost, and people would be put out, and they will rely on organizations that don't have the means to supplement it, because there's no failsafe.
Can you wrap up, please?
I will. I appreciate all the Aldermen. I appreciate the time, and I have to say, you guys all gave us time, and I appreciate it. I just, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. I think I skipped Eric.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Louis Louis in Nashua, DW Highway. Thank you for giving us the time to speak. You know, we've spent over $60,000 in barriers and increased air filtration, extra labor to have things cleaned properly, and if this 9:30 curfew goes into effect, you're really saying that we can't see guests after 8:00 PM. So that significantly cuts down on the time that we could serve guests. And with over 60 employees, and many of them have children at home that have to do remote learning during the day, so the only time they can work is at night. So, you know, now you're really cutting into the hours that we can generate revenue. And with sales already down, and we're trying to do everything we can to stay within the guidelines to serve guests safely, it's just, you know, I know, you know, when you talk about science, the real impact is even greater. And doing everything that we can do while all the other stores don't have to follow those types of guidelines. I just think it's a bad idea to institute this. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Next, I have Seth. Seth, are you still there, wanting to speak?
Yes, please.
Name an address for the record.
South Simontonian, 25 Old Reynolds Bridge Road, Hollisville, Hampshire. I own the Flight Center in downtown Nashua. I want to point out that regardless of if it's known or not, the city has controlled the narrative through the whole level of COVID that has painted the hospitality industry to be a negative driving force around COVID. And we are an industry that's been held to the highest standards, above and beyond the high standards we're already held to. As most have indicated, we've made significant investments in staffing, in supplies, in cleaning products, and barriers, and being able to ensure we can protect our patrons to not only our fullmost potential, but above the guidelines that are being set for us. The City of Nashua's gonna step above and place additional guidelines and ordinances, whether it's the mask ordinance and ask us as small business owners to enforce, which is fine. What you're looking to do with a curfew is not only detrimental, but also controlling this narrative of letting out that a curfew is being viewed to potentially put down a rise of COVID amongst restaurants in Nashua is interesting because the data doesn't really pinpoint that a rise of COVID incidents in the city are coming from our hospitality industries. Per your guys' reports, 13% of known cases came out of restaurants. We're looking to take away up to 60% of the business that our restaurants are getting right now by putting this curfew in place. The number of employees that potentially can be out of work is huge. By you guys even putting out there that there could be a potential curfew, a lot of people already assume that it's in place. And our business since this announcement has significantly decreased after the hours of the clock. Being a downtown restaurant, we rely on those late night hours to stay open, to stay profitable, to stay in business. It's wildly inefficient that you guys are operating on an assumption of data sets that seem to not be true. Massachusetts rolled a curfew out six, eight weeks ago. Their numbers have not decreased one week since they've rolled out a curfew. So you cannot say that there's been a positive intake from a curfew being laid out. And if you're fearful of individuals from Massachusetts coming into our bars because a curfew exists in their state, we are tracing every individual that walks through our door, and we check every ID that walks through our door. I can tell you the number of individuals coming in from Massachusetts after the 8 o'clock hour is not high. It's not a percentage number that we should even be functionally worried about. It's not like half of my business or three quarters of my business is coming from out of state, if that is our true fear. When we're not looking to take into account what's going on at the Pheasant Lane Mall during the holiday season, and how many individuals from the state of Massachusetts may be shopping in those retail outlets, or whether there's 1,000 people walking around a big box retail store, we're still yet pinpointing and focused in on the hospitality industry that's, your own data shows is not proving an impact in the rise in numbers of COVID. I implore you to vote against this, this measure, and to make sure that you publicly announce that this measure did fail, if it is to fail, so that our community understands that this curfew is not in effect, and they are able to come back out and be in our businesses. It really is disappointing after the city did such an amazing job this summer to help reinforce our business structure in a really struggling time, that this is where we've landed in moments that we're still having to space every other table and seat minimally six people at a table. And again, following some of the highest guidelines and restrictions that both the federal and state governments, local governments have placed on any industry. Being one of the cleanest industries in this environment, I feel like we seem to still be made out to be the evil force driving what's going on in the world today. I appreciate your guys' time. I appreciate you listening in. And please, if you, when you do decide to vote, please vote no against this measure.
Thank you. Mike Summers.
Yes, good evening. My name is Mike Summers. I live in Hooksett. But I'm President and CEO of the Hampshire Lodging and Restaurant Association. We have more than 40 member restaurants in the greater Nashville area.
Mike, can I interrupt you for one second?
Certainly.
Everyone needs to put their phones and computers on mute, except for the speaker, please. Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt, but it was very loud background noise.
Well, that's quite right. I think that was an episode of Friends or something, so. But again, I'm speaking to you this evening. Appreciate the opportunity to do so on behalf of our 40-plus restaurants in the Nashville area. Certainly, I want to give a little bit of broader perspective, if I may. I just want you to understand that, you know, the restaurant industry in New Hampshire and across this country is an industry in crisis right now. You know, I talked to restaurants from all over the state, Nashua specifically in the last few weeks, and they're all telling me that their downs anywhere between 40 and 60% in business just since Halloween. So this is, this is a really dangerous time for a lot of our industry members. You know, I'll touch on them briefly as these have already been mentioned. Obviously, if we go to a 9:30 curfew, we will see layoffs. That's absolutely gonna happen. And I think some numbers have been shared with you just as to what those will be. You know, some of the science and the data that I think I shared with you all in the letter over the weekend, you know, 75% or more of the community transmission is taking place in private homes. Uh, you know, seventy-five percent or more of the, of the community transmission is taking place in private homes. And one thing I want you to consider is this. If you have a nine thirty curfew, folks are not going to go out to eat after eight, eight thirty at the latest. But they're still going to get together. And where are they going to do that? They are likely going to do that within their homes with, uh, visiting with family, with friends, whomever it might be. And we're essentially going to have the opposite effect. We're actually going to compound the situation that is the problem to begin with. So I would, I certainly urge you not to, uh, adopt this. The other point I'd like to make and, and ask you to consider is enforcement. You know, i- if you, i- if you roll out a curfew at nine thirty, I would assume that there's going to be some enforcement action that would have to be taken. And I, I think I would make the case that if you're going to make, uh, uh, roll out enforcement and take that action, why not take that time and enforce the guidelines that are in place right now, as, as a couple of people have mentioned? Let's focus on the, the, the bad apples that are really making it hard for the rest of the industry to operate. Let's, let's, uh, hold them accountable and let's reward those who are doing all the right things that have made the investments that are going above and beyond. And let's reward them by allowing them to stay open. Uh, they're going to continue to do the right things as with, as with all situations like this. Those who are going to follow the rules are already following the rules. Those who are not going to follow the rules are never going to follow the rules. And so I would just encourage you to, to, um, oppose this regulation. And, and again, not, not being a resident, I'm certainly going to yield my time, but I thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. And I certainly hope that you vote no tomorrow, uh, as you do it, right? Thank you.
Thank you. Maurice Werble.
Hi, thanks for having me tonight. Good evening. Um, I'd like to just take a moment to, um, touch upon what Heather had mentioned before. Um, I'm Maurice Werble with the Front Door Agency, Seven Concord Street in Nashua. And one of the things that I'm really concerned about if this ordinance goes through is the demand on social services network that we're already going to see. We've seen a significant increase already in the number of requests for people looking for housing assistance with rent utilities. And a lot of that has come from the hospitality network already. So I am afraid that we are going to see a, a significant increase in demand first for public support through our city welfare departments, through our nonprofit partners. If this ordinance goes through, as many of our families are already working the evening shifts. So by reducing the number of hours, as mentioned before, and the number of employees that would then get laid off, that will tax certainly our, our, uh, social service system. So I would hope and encourage that you think about that as well. And, uh, vote no for this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Harding.
Hi there. Um, my name's Barbara Harding. I live at nine Echo Ave in Nashua. I have, um, two jobs in the community. Uh, worked for Greenbrier as their clinical liaison and I, uh, worked for Green, I'm sorry, I worked for Billiards, um, for Kurt and the rest of the team. Uh, thank you guys for speaking. So I can tell you that as the liaison for Greenbrier, I see a lot of referrals from the hospitals and a lot of people with COVID. And those people with COVID are not the people that are coming in at night. It's a, it's a completely different generation, completely different group of people. There has been no change in the numbers from Massachusetts. Uh, I previously was an infection control nurse, so I've been following this pretty closely. So making this curfew, all that's going to happen is people are going to move to the next town or the next home. They're going to go to Manchester. They're going to go to Salem. It's, it's not going to change what people do. All it's going to do for the people in Nashua, for all the people that work for these businesses is put them out of work and cause struggle, depression, suicide. What I have seen go up is the depression rate. And the amount of people that don't have enough money anymore, that don't have a job to go to, that they can't afford to take care of their own children. If you cut these hours, businesses are sure to close. And I just, I can't see how it would be possible to do it when I'm, I look at those numbers every day and I see the clientele that are positive with COVID. I see it on a daily basis. And I could tell you it is not the same at all. And I work for, I get referrals from here all the way, you know, I, I take every referral for New Hampshire for Greenbrier Healthcare. So I see them. So yeah, I have two jobs, but the people I work with at Billiards, where does that leave them? Where does that leave anybody with a small business? It leaves them broke and struggling for help. So I, I really implore you to vote no.
Thank you. Tanya Chavez.
Hi. Um, I just would like
You name an address for the record, please.
Okay. My name is Tanya Chavez and I live at twenty eighth Prescott Street. And I just would like to show support and stand by the job I work at, which is at Boston Billiard Club. And I would like to stand by them because we have like taken precautions so seriously. And I just want to vote no because I, I will be one of the people, you know, like will be like affected and stuff. And I don't want to see my friends getting affected, you know, my family, they're like my family. And you know, it's, it's gonna suck, yo. It's gonna suck. And you know, and Nashua is so great, but this curfew is gonna, it's gonna mess a lot of people up. And I just want to show my support with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya. Charles Capetta.
Yes, good evening. Um, President Will Sharpe, I'm, I'm a member of the Board of Health and wanted for the, I, at twenty-three hundred Southwood Drive. I wanted to know if I, I'm going to read a part, part of my, um, letter I wanted to send to you later, if I could do so, um, tonight to send after the meeting with your permission.
You can.
Yes, thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Chuck Capetta and I'm honored to serve as a member of the Nashua Board of Health. For the past six years and a full-time pediatrician here in Nashua for the past twenty-seven. And, um, I just want to state a few things. I'm not going to read my whole speech because everyone's been so wonderful and you're talking tonight and and I love the candor and the honesty. So I'm going to begin my remarks by stating for the record, this has not been an easy discussion for the Board of Health. And to frame our efforts, for those who haven't been part of the past discussion, we're not the Board of Labor, we're not the Board of Commerce or Trade. So where we started this education prevention message emanated from our roles as Board of Health members. As more medical professionals, professionals, our mission is straightforward and our only agenda is short and sweet. How can we maintain the best possible outcomes of good health for all those around us in our collective community, both young and old, while advocating for strategies or solutions that may be able to minimize sickness and maximize disease prevention? That's the definition of public health. This proposed short-term emergency ordinance was one such example of us trying to do our best to preserve and protect the health and wellbeing of the citizens in Nashua. Short and sweet. And I had some data that I'll share later that everyone knows with the alderman. Uh, but locally, our numbers are, reflect the same scary statistics. And other members of the department who might be online tonight may be able to direct, uh, their attention to that. But this virus, like no, like all viruses, doesn't pay attention to the rules or stop signs. The train has left the station. And again, it's a short-term emergency measure to see if we can try to decrease the rate of viral infectivity spread and lessen the speed that the COVID virus gathers each and every day on its path to increasing morbidity, illness and mortality death. So, and it's never been, nor will be, the activity the Board of Health to attempt to interfere with and purposely disrupt or disregard the heroic efforts put forth by all of you and your wonderful comments tonight of the hardworking Nashua business leaders with regards to trying to come to grips with the best way to control, combat this deadly virus. And I'm daily amazed by all your efforts and I thank you in advance. For those asking for evidence around, show me the science and the data. I heard that tonight. We do have, you're right, we have limited, if any, data at the present time to outline how these curfews could work or what we want them to do. But when, not if, we climb out of this scary hole, we find ourselves in, those smarter than me maybe look at this and see if these actions that we're proposing make any difference. So there's a few other points. Am I hopeful that by implementing the curfew, the virus will suddenly shrink away and run for the hills? Of course not. But for me, the act of medically doing nothing is just not an option. What we do know relative to this ordinance are four prevent, key prevention measures that have been shown to be effective and universally accepted. And all of you online have worked hard to maintain these and they're indisputable. In their twenty-four seven attempt to combat this, social distancing of six feet or more, wearing appropriate face masks, hand washing and proper ventilation methods. And specifically tonight, I wanted to address the question about why does it appear that restaurant bars and other establishments that serve food and drink seem to be the sole focus of this ordinance versus the big box stores who have more people perhaps going through them than these apparent targeted Sorry.
No, that was, that was another audience member who should not have spoken up. I apologize for your, the interruption.
Oh, no. Well, so I included a Boston Globe link that came out to start to address this because the science is coming. It isn't here yet. But the answer to the question about why is this restaurant or other activity locations, um, our starting point is simple. One, people take their masks off to eat and drink, and it's this activity that leads to a higher spreadable virus infectivity potential. Two, alcohol decreases inhibitions and potential for louder talking, shouting across the tables and therefore more spread. And it's a fact that we now know that aerosolized droplets from just speaking or talking can travel up to three to nine feet. Three, physical barriers on tables between patrons do not stop the spread of the virus when the mask is off, but often simply act like a fly swatter where the virus can hit the wall and be pushed off in different directions depending on the makeup of the bearer. AKA Plex, Plexiglas wood, plastic. Four, barriers are hard to clean and though maybe look clean to the naked eye are not sterile for the next patron. Despite the best attempt to clean them between settings and through no fault of all the wonderful staff members who attempt to clean them, viruses can be very resistant to being decimated. And lastly, most importantly, people are congregating these establishments in tight spaces. Even though upholding the six feet of social distancing for an extended period of time, up to ninety minutes in some locations, situated to next to other patrons who are not usually in the same personal bubble space as themselves or their family members at home versus the stream of people with masks walking with usually limited respiratory contact through the aisles of the big box stores or grocery stores. And from the beginning, our public health department has been effusive to all the businesses have played by the rules. And I agree, there are some outliers that we continue to need to educate and support their efforts to make this better. And it was never meant to be a punitive act against the select group of Nashua citizens who we all support and endorse, but rather as an ordinance, as one medical short-term effort to decrease the spread before a potential complete shutdown encroaches upon all of us in the next few months. Healthy people drive healthy businesses. We won't have either if we continue in the way we're going. Lastly, as a frequent patron to so many of the great Nashua businesses, I'm torn in my role as a citizen and in my role as a health educator by my allegiance and oath that I took over thirty-two years ago as a physician to uphold and protect to the best of my ability. One's health above all is the singular drive, driving force here and trying to make a difference. And for this reason, I believe I have to try this emergency ordinance before it gets worse. Thank you, President, for listening.
Thank you. Kevin McMahon.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Kevin McMahon. I work at Boston Berry Club in Casino. I wanted just, um, coming right after trials, I just wanted to sort of bring up that uh, we certainly appreciate everything that you're, you've done for the community, everything that, you know, your, your group, the Board of Health has set out to do. Unfortunately, the, the, the way you opened your, your comments, it mentioned a, a lot of ifs and, um, the, the concept of sort of measuring the effect of a curfew like this after the fact. And, you know, based upon everyone that we see on this call tonight, um, everything, everyone that we've heard speak already, it seems to me that it, it's going to affect a lot of people, um, much more than it might help a few. Um, and I think everyone here is agreeing on that. Um, two other things I'll underscore quickly. You know, I see stories almost daily in the Union Leader, um, The Telegraph, New Hampshire Business Review about charities that are struggling, um, people that are coming to charities and they don't have the resources that they need, that they used to have. Uh, in October alone, Boston Berry Club gave away, um, or excuse me, donated three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars to Nashville-based charities. Um, certainly the river, um, gave away, I'm, I'm, I'm sure, um, significant number as well. So we're talking about just, you know, per month, several hundred thousand dollars worth of donations, unmarked donations going to Nashville-based charities. Um, those would be nearly evaporated if we were to see this curfew go through. And finally, a couple of our employees have mentioned the, the Health Screener app that, uh, that is part of our daily process of prior to each and every shift. If that, uh, you, we, we take that very seriously. Uh, there are repercussions if we discover someone has not filled it out. If someone has filled it out untruthfully, there are disciplinary action. There have been terminations based upon people not, you know, giving that the, the, the seriousness that, that we want them to. So, um, I, I to all the, all the people, I appreciate your nay votes on, on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have someone who is identified with their hand up is iPad. Seeing no one, I will move on to Angela.
Sorry, ma'am.
Okay.
Uh, Chris Witkowski, forty-one Kingston Drive in Nashua. Um, I am a manager for Boston Builder Club. And I just want to touch a couple of things, you know, working at the club, like everybody from, you know, the cleaners to the bartenders to the dealers. And, you know, and Lau touched on this and Heather and, and my entire, you know, BBC family, it's like we take pride in keeping people safe. You know, if people take their mask off, we ask them, put them back on. If they don't, we ask them to leave. You know, all of my door staff takes it very personal because they want to, you know, protect themselves. They want to protect, you know, everybody that's in the club, you know, and for the most part, we have a great, you know, clientele that comes in that follows the rules and they understand it. They want a place to go with all the stress going on right now with, you know, home and, you know, Christmas is a couple of days away. You know, so it's, you know, Barbara touched on it and everything else. And, you know, we do a lot and, you know, where it comes to, you know, holding people accountable, you know, there should be some kind of thing that we can work out with the health department. You know, eh, for compliance and everything else, you know, we touched upon it with Kurt and everything else. And I'm sure he can elaborate, but, and to, you know, and another point is, you know, we talk about, yes, the employees and you're looking at the faces, probably going to be someone that would be laid off if this goes through. There's also other people, it's the trickle-down effect. I know, I see Dan Latums on here, you know, he's one of my reps. You know, since March, I do, you know, half of the ordering for the club. And I talk to my beer reps, I talk to my liquor reps. And the amount of sales that they are down because people are already like, we can't go out. Or, you know, they're worried about this or that. And the other thing, you know, if this goes through, you know, that trickle-down effect affects multiple people, multiple businesses. Whereas our produce company, maybe they have to make a layoff because their sales are down. Nashua is a big place which affects multiple people beyond the restaurant industry a- at that time. So, um, and, uh, something to the health department. They talk about big box stores. Okay. We take multiple precautions, wiping down railings. Any surface that can be touched. When I go to Best Buy or I go to the grocery store, nobody comes behind anybody wiping down products that they're touching on multiple times. And it's not just one person, it's little kids that are wiping their nose. So to go to the effect of say that people can go to any place and not everybody's taking precautions that the people in the restaurant industry and the bar industry are going above and beyond that are set forth for us. You know, I know, I'm sure Jim from the river, you guys sterilize your chips and you wash your cards. We take multiple steps to keep people safe. So, that's, uh, all I got to say. And I, please vote no on this. So thank you for your time.
Thank, thank you. Angela Constantino.
Good evening. Angela Constantino, one forty-two Main Street. I'm the epidemiologist for the City of Nashua, Division of Public Health and Community Services. Um, so I'd just like to review the outbreak cluster and watch list data that was provided in your packets and clarify some of the information. So for some background, at the Division of Public Health, we monitor all positive cases that live in the city of Nashua and conduct disease investigation interviews for about seventy percent, um, which is where we get all of this information from. So if you look at the table entitled Nashua Facilities on Watch, we have the exposure reports in Nashua from October to So if you look at the table entitled Nashua Facilities on Watch, we have the exposure reports in Nashua from October to mid-December. These are all of the facilities that have either experienced an outbreak, which is defined as three or more cases without any connection to each other, a cluster, which is less than three cases that are connected to each other, or are on our watch list, which is an infectious period exposure at a facility with potential for spread. So these are not all of the cases in Nashua. These are just the outbreak or cluster-related cases. And it is worthwhile to note that the patron cases at businesses and restaurants, bars and clubs are likely under-reported as a patron of a facility would have to know about their exposure at said facility to be identified as part of the outbreak or cluster. So we typically see an increase in patron cases when an outbreak or cluster is made public as people can identify their exposure to that facility. So since October, there has been a total of a hundred and forty-five exposure reports with four hundred and twenty-four total cases associated with these exposures. Nineteen of these reports are associated with restaurants, bars, nightclubs and social clubs. Of these nineteen exposures on our watch list, thirteen are in restaurants, bars and clubs that are open late and six are in diner or coffee shop type locations. There was a total of fifty-seven cases associated with those outbreaks. Seventy-five percent of those cases were in staff and twenty-five percent of those cases were in patrons. There are approximately two hundred and ninety-seven contacts associated with those cases. That is an average of six restaurants, bars or clubs that were impacted per month for the past three months and approximately a hundred residents that are quarantined a month due to exposure at a restaurant. I would like to reiterate that the numbers that we have on patron cases and contacts associated with restaurants is likely under-reported and the true count is likely higher as the patrons have to be able to identify their exposure in order to report it. And then I also just want to briefly talk about there's been a lot of mention about the New York Times Contact Tracing article. I just want to clarify that we do track transmission types of all cases in New Hampshire. As of last night, fourteen point four percent of New Hampshire cases were due to contact with someone with COVID-19. Fourteen percent were clusters associated, five percent were travel associated, nine point eight percent were community transmission and the remaining fifty-six point six percent was unclear or unknown. So for a case to be categorized as transmitted via community transmission, it's likely that they would have told the person conducting the interview that the only places they had gone or the only other people that they had seen had been at the grocery store, pharmacy or some other community-based business. For a case to be categorized as unclear or unknown, the person had no idea where they may have gotten sick and they had no contact with positive cases that they knew of. They could not pinpoint a specific place or time. And these unclear, unknown cases are likely community-based as well. And this is a category where individuals who are exposed at restaurants, bars or clubs would likely fall into. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Matt Solan. Matt, are you on?
Yes, hey, I am on. Can, can folks hear me?
Yes, need your name and address for the record, please.
Hey, Matt Solan. I am at Digital Drive in Nashville, New Hampshire. So let me turn off the video because it's going to lag. So can everybody hear me clearly?
Yes.
Great. So just want to say it saddens me to hear from a lot of the people who have talked about how they're going to lose income or have their jobs at risk here and worry about how to pay the bills. I heard a lot of folks who said they worked at the Boston Billiard Club and Casino. I was actually just there a couple hours ago myself. I was not worried about getting COVID-19. I think they've done a good job along with a lot of other restaurants implementing good sanitation. Everybody has to wear masks there, et cetera. And I think that, you know, it's going to be tough for those people. We're talking about going into basically, you know, this is the week at Christmas. People are going to have bills to pay come the end of the month, January rent. And you're saying that you're going to shut down basically businesses nine-thirty, killing those people's jobs. And I think that's, that's just terrible. Also, there was the physician who mentioned, you know, that they had limited data. So I know that New York City did some analysis on their cases. Only at one point four percent linked to indoor dining and drinking. It's less than two out of every hundred cases. So I believe that the aldermen, they need to vote against this measure. It's going to cause irreparable economic harm and damage to our community. If they vote for this measure and passes, they will be responsible for killing jobs in our town and that's not good. Also, what's going to happen too? If businesses in Nashville have to close down at nine-thirty, whether it's a restaurant or a gaming facility, they're going to get hurt because people are just going to go to their competition. People are going to say, well, if the place closes at nine-thirty, I'll go to Manchester, go to Salem, go to Portsmouth, some other towns. So we're going to actually kill the city of Nashua and that business is just going to go elsewhere. So it doesn't make any sense, you know, how can you think that it's okay if somebody shows up at nine-fifteen, it's fine, but come nine-thirty-one, they're going to get or spread COVID. It just doesn't make sense. I implore the alderman to vote against this measure. And I'll mention also, so I'm a part-time poker player, which is why I was actually at, at Billiards today. I don't rely on that income to pay my bills, but I know a lot of people that do. They, they play professionally and if they can't play poker because they said to close down earlier, they won't make as much income or any income and they rely on that income, some of them to feed their families and pay the rent. And so you're putting a lot of people out of work who might not be eligible for traditional unemployment insurance-type programs. So that's, that's my commentary. I hope the aldermen vote against this and I hope we can keep the economy strong in New Hampshire.
Thank you. Next, we have Tyler R.
My name is Tyler Ramraff. I live at thirty-four Tough Strive. Vote no regarding this ordinance. My objection is based on the lack of stated measured intent in the for how these measure, these measures will positively affect Nashua. In the ordinance document, there is no explanation using evidence or evidence-based assessments to articulate why closing at nine-thirty is appropriate, but at nine-twenty-nine is not. If you're going to use the threat of government force and coercion to restrict the movements in businesses, free people, explanation of incremental or arbitrary thresholds is not just appropriate, but required. If intended benefit of this is only alluded to with cited documents and imprecise language. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak at this time?
Yeah, Don Whalen here, twelve Lincoln Ave, Nashua. It's great to see the restaurant, bar owners, the casino folks here, and I'm sure there would be more represented if they weren't out busy running their businesses, which most of it happens at night. So we should really be supporting our small businesses. They're the lifeblood of our community. They really are. Voting yes on this is going to make, is allowing the alderman, the board of aldermen to pick winners and losers. And I don't think that's fair. I think you should vote no on this one hundred percent. I think let people choose on their own if they want to go out. Most people haven't been going out, but you're affecting people's livelihoods. This is, this is their job. They need to make money. You're probably not, I bet the board of aldermen folks haven't lost any money because you're not trying to shut down whatever business they're working in. So you're impacting a lot of people by trying to shut that down. I vote no. I think it's absolutely a terrible idea to have a curfew. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Mallory.
Hi, Mallory Fogel. I live in Merrimack, three thirty-two Denny Webster Highway, Merrimack, New Hampshire. I work for Boston Billiards in Nashua. I just, I don't really understand the curfew that's about to be placed over Nashua. I think that if it does get placed, all it's going to do is just directly hurt Nashua businesses only because the people that are frequenting Nashua businesses are just going to expand to other towns, Merrimack, Manchester, other places. I think that Boston Billiards specifically and other places are going to be really hurt by this. I get when Massachusetts did a statewide, but for just a single in on one city doesn't really seem like it's going to help with limiting the spread of COVID-19. It will directly affect a lot of people that I've worked with for years. I just think there needs to be more planning in place. I don't think this is the right route to go to help stop the spread of COVID. I think it's just more going to directly hurt a lot of the Nashua citizens and people that work in Nashua. That's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you. Mike Affleberg.
Yes, good evening, Alderman Mike Affleberg. I am president of the United Way of Greater Nashua. And for the purposes of transparency, I will also acknowledge that we are recipients of charitable gaming revenues from Boston Billiards. As I believe is the front door agency and Maurice Werble spoke previously. I think it's important to know that before I speak. I wanted to address unintended consequences and two factors which I think are important to take into account when deciding whether to pursue a curfew or not. The first is my interpretation of what might occur when we drive patrons of these businesses that would be affected to outlying or neighboring communities. Of course, we do not have a statewide curfew. We, we're talking about a Nashua-specific curfew, which means that we could very easily be driving patrons to places like Manchester, which are also COVID hotspots with much, much looser ordinances as it relates to the wearing of masks and social distancing. My best guess is that there's a good chance that we might actually be importing more COVID-19 into our community as a result of that than we actually might be deterring as a result of the ordinance. I would expect that you would take that into account in your thinking. The other factor which I'd like you to consider are the social determinants of health. Maurice addressed the potential for an uptick in people seeking or needing assistance, welfare assistance. We've heard from any number of people who have said point blank that they're at risk of losing their jobs. Of course, the stress that goes along with that and the, you know, the need to take advantage of the welfare system as a result could very well affect people's behavioral health, which in turn can affect their physical health. And I know that our Board of Health is well aware of the social determinants that go along with health consequences. So I would like for you to take those two factors into account when you decide on this ordinance moving forward. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Next, I have Ray Ely.
Thank you for hearing me. I am in favor of this ordinance, but let me say, I don't want anybody to lose their job. That's not what this is about. This is about that there is a virus out there that's infecting more and more people. And the virus is very simple. If you can get people to stay apart and protect themselves, there'll be fewer people that get infected. And the thing about thinking about our jobs today is short-term, but the numbers are growing and this thing is getting worse. And at some point, it's going to come on us anyway. So we, we're short-term and I understand everybody want to keep their job. Believe me, I get that. But from the, but the government has to think about, is it a good idea to have people out there working so they can make a living when they're actually spreading the virus more? Because that's what we're really doing. We're coming together and we're insisting that we stay together. We're spreading the virus more and either you're helping the virus or you're not helping the virus. And right now, insisting that we change nothing is helping the virus. And I think we may regret that one day because the numbers are rising. The hospitals are filling up. And at some point, we're going to be under something anyway. So I just don't want that to happen. And I don't know if people are hearing, but they got a new version of it out in England and it's seventy percent more contagious and we got to deal with that coming too. So it's just, I get it about the jobs. Maybe we can find a way around that, but the bottom line is this thing is coming and it doesn't care about the holidays. It doesn't care about any of that. I'm done. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Next, I have Michael Buckley.
Thank you, President Wiltshire. Boarder Alderman, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Listened to a lot of people. A lot of people had a lot of good things to say. But there is a few more things to consider. Some of it will be redundant, but I, I understand what the last gentleman's comments were and appreciate them as well as Dr. Capetta. Good comments. But there, you know, when you force people out of the bars, I mean, let's face it, this, with the timing of this, I'd say it's, it's really geared, it will affect my business, of course, like Michael Sommers said, if, if it's a nine-thirty curfew, people will think, oh, I can't really, I don't want to bother going at eight or eight-thirty because I'm going to be forced out of the restaurant. It, we will see an impact from it. No doubt, we've already been impacted greatly and, and our numbers are, are not good this year. I appreciate what the mayor and, and the city has done for the downtown this summer and that was fantastic. But that was a few months that helped us for those few months, but the previous to that and since then, with the cold weather, it's, it's been really drastic. So I'll, I'll start by saying, I'll reiterate, reiterate the fact that you know, if you close the bars in, in Nashua, people will go to Manchester, they'll go to other Hudson, they'll go wherever, they'll go other places. But where I think they'll really go, you have a group of young people that are, you know, at bars and having a good time and feeling good. You know, they're going to go to people's houses. They're going to be, hey, you know, let's all go back to my place. And you're going to see possibly, you know, ten, twenty, thirty people in somebody's apartment without masks, which I, I think is far worse than what we're talking about here with some structure in, in these establishments. Keep in mind, bar owners are, are business people too. They're entrepreneurs. A lot of them are younger entrepreneurs. A lot of them are struggling like the rest of us. They've been struggling for a long time now and some of them are probably on the brink. So I, I'd like to say, you know, if there's people that have been not conforming or abusing what's going on and, and you see things that you, have you tried to work with these people, you know? How hard have you tried to work with them? Remember, they're, they're, they're the business people of tomorrow, a lot of them. They're business people right now. We don't, we don't need to be driving anybody out of business, especially when the alternative is going to people's apartments or wherever else they're going. So I would stress maybe working with them. If you have really problem proprietors, then maybe you need to take some action if, if that's the only choice you have. But I don't know what's been tried so far. But I'll implore you to work with people versus, you know, destroying, you know, maybe their business or livelihood. You know, we've seen this in other municipalities across the country or the states or the cities where they've done this or more drastic measures in, in a lot of areas and it doesn't seem to have impacted the spread at all. It, the, the spread continues to rise regardless. All you, all they've managed to do is put people out of business. From what I've seen, correct me if I'm wrong, I haven't seen the cases come crashing down when they close all these restaurants and, and bars down. In some, in some places, it's, it's complete shutdowns and it still hasn't seemed to change it. So need to be kept, that needs to be kept in mind. You know, you could be putting people out of business needlessly. You know, it's, it's, it's still up, up for debate whether it's going to help at all. I'm sure all of you have been into the grocery stores and Home Depot and everywhere else right before the storm, these last couple of storms. I mean, could it get any worse? There was people on top of people. People on top of people with all the cashiers stuck at their post for hours on end, touching their mask, touching your food. Everybody in the store is touching stuff, putting it down. The person behind them is touching the stuff after they've touched the mask. I don't, I don't see that as any better than what we're doing in the restaurants where we're working very hard to, to do everything that's been required of us so far. So I, I, I think that we are under stricter control and we, we try to work with that control a lot harder than a lot of other industries. So, you know, those are just some points I wanted to make. I, I know that all the aldermen got my letter. I had already written several days ago a red, a red, a letter of disapproval of this curfew. And I, I know you've all read it. I've been reached, several aldermen have reached out to me and, and commented on it. I appreciate that consideration of that letter as well as my remarks tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
I'd like to say something.
Okay, name and address for the record, please.
Dan Latham, thirteen Beaver Street in Nashua.
Okay.
And, and what I'd like to say is I'd like to advocate on the, on the behalf of Nashua. I, I'm in the, I work for a company called Horizon Beverage and we distribute wine and spirits. And I travel most of the state. And I think it's very unfair that Nashua is the one under the spotlight right now. When I, this is the jewel of the state. What they did when we opened up, when, when we opened up downtown and I think it was April, we were the envy of everybody because I think you're taking out of the equation the people who, who run the businesses downtown, who live here, we would took it so seriously and professionally. I couldn't be more proud and going to seeing other cities like Manchester lagging behind us and, and other cities. We really, oh, take our hats, I take my hats off to the people who work and live in Nashua in the restaurant industry. And I, I do think it's unfair that we are being targeted. I also sent a letter to the Board of Aldermen and Mayor Donches. I hope you read it. It was, it was pretty beefy. of Alderman and Mayor Donches. I hope you read it. Um, it was, it was pretty beef, but uh brief. Um, but I I get just, I just wanted to advocate for Nashua, and I think you should challenge, you challenged it once before, challenge them again. They'll do the right things. We, they made us proud. They'll do it again. This is a great city. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. It looks like I have someone named A A Ron that would like to speak.
Yes.
Name an address for the record, please.
My name is Aaron Howard. I live at three sixty-six Main Street uh in Nashua. I work at Boston Billiard Club. Uh, I would like to point out a couple of things. The, one of the foundations of this proposal is that somehow people from Massachusetts, because they have a curfew, they're flooding the border and they're crossing the border to come to the southern towns of New Hampshire uh in order to be entertained because everything is closed in Massachusetts. Well, I can tell you from personal experience as a manager at Boston Billiard Club that we are less busy now than we were before Massachusetts instituted their curfew. Think about that. The foundation of this proposal is is not based on something that is actually happening. I would also like to point out that as it was publicly acknowledged, we did have cases within within the staff of Boston Billiards. The current system is working. Everybody that comes into the restaurant has to leave their name and phone number. As soon as we identified cases, we closed down, we reopened, we strengthened our protocols, and the chain of transmission is broken. And this is at the largest food, maybe not, I think it's the largest food and beverage establishment in Nashua, but if not the largest, one of the largest. We broke the chain. The current system worked. And my last point is that except for the Board of Health members, nobody has spoken in favor of this. And I would like to ask the aldermen, as elected officials, to listen to to your community, you know, please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak that has not already spoken?
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
Ben Kasek.
Don't, don't, Ed, perfect. You're the first one in my entire life that's pronounced that correctly.
No, thank you.
So, so I'm uh, I I'm I'm the guy that has been quoted at least three times now in the newspaper for a statement I made in a previous meeting uh with the uh with with the Board of Aldermen where where I said that I felt like this was a knee jerk reaction to a problem that we didn't know what the solution was. And I stand by that statement. I've been doing more research since that time, and I see no, I see no evidence scientifically.
Not sure how to speak.
Pardon me? I see no evidence scientifically or otherwise that supports that a curfew would do anything to help curtail this virus. I get that this virus is a serious thing, and I have relatives who have contracted it and friends who have contracted it. But all you're doing with a a a random curfew is causing people to pack into the facilities that you're trying to protect earlier in higher densities. And there's no evidence to support that this makes any sense in doing. So I I I remain saying that this is a knee jerk reaction to a problem because you don't have any other ideas to solve it. And that's not the way to solve these kind of problems. We need to be thoughtful about this. We don't need to just do what Massachusetts has done and think that that's the right thing. You know, I'm done.
Laurie, you're on mute.
Thank you, Ben. A McNichols? You're on mute. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alicia McNichols. Um, Single Mill Drive, Nashua. Um, I want to start out by saying that I don't go to bars. I don't work in bars. I don't know anybody that works in a bar, and I am wholeheartedly against this curfew. Um, if we're going to allow sports kids to gather, um churches, congregations with even larger amounts in closer quarters, singing, talking, um, I think it's difficult to justify saying, well, at nine thirty, we're going to cut that off. If church started at nine thirty, would we cut that off too? Um, are we not going to have midnight mass on Christmas because it's after nine thirty? Um, you know, and I think we have to understand, too, that this goes beyond um just the spread of COVID. We have what was brought up before charitable gaming, which is incredibly important to the city. We have parents who are incredibly stressed out, teaching their kids at home and trying to handle remote learning. Again, my girls are in college. I don't, I don't have a pony in this race, but I can, I'm open minded enough to understand that this is not the solution unless you're going to shut everything down which we don't want. I think picking and choosing an hour and putting people out of work is not the answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who has not previously spoken that wants to speak to the board?
I haven't spoken. I just dial in.
Okay, name and address for the record.
Yeah, for the record, I live in Nashua. I've been in Nashua for about a year and a half. Moved here from Boston. I think I agree with the previous speaker. I think we don't have a significant risk in Nashua. And I think it's kind of idiotic to assume that nine thirty is the right timing. It's like nine twenty-nine, you're safe. Nine thirty, you're automatically getting COVID. And we don't have a significant outbreak here. And people pretty much live very cautiously and socially distanced. And well, I don't see an obvious need of imposing that. That's all.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to make a last call. If anyone who has not spoken yet and wishes to address the board.
I would like to speak.
Sean?
Yep. So, two thirty, two thirty-six Manchester Street, Nashua. Um, I just have three things to state. First, I was at the Pheasant Lane Mall today at eleven thirty shopping, and there were so many people down there. Okay, so I don't know how you can rule out restaurants and businesses at nine thirty when you can't even get a parking spot at the Pheasant Lane Mall. And if you want to enforce things, you should be looking at something like that and not at restaurants. The other thing I have is where did the time of nine thirty come from? I haven't heard any data on that to support that. Okay? And I'm against this. I don't think it's fair. And there's not enough data to support a decision. Even the Board of Health just said so. Okay? It's a theory. It's shared across everywhere. But you need data to make a claim. It needs to be sufficient data, like when they release a vaccine before we're the only town and city in the state on the border, one of them, that's shutting down. It doesn't make any sense. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Sean. Uh, it looks like I have Jeff Watt.
Yes, hi. Thanks for listening to us tonight, and thanks for the rest of my colleagues um for chiming in. I'm Jeff Boyce. I own Steva Blue on Pearl Street in Nashua. Um, I think it's been fairly well articulated how many jobs will be lost. Um, I think it's also important to consider that it's a pretty tight knit industry, so there are many couples, uh married couples, parents that both work in this industry. Well, then this will affect whole families, obviously, children and others. Um, in addition to that, I think it's important for the Health Department and for uh the Board to understand a little bit more how we operate. I mean, are you in the restaurants? Have you gone to restaurants? Have you spent a whole night and see how we control our patrons? I think there's very few industries that can um affect their guests like we can. We take their name and their number when they come in. We tell them where to sit. We tell them basically how much they can drink. We tell them how long they can stay. We clean, polish, sanitize everything they touch. No one touches it except for them and the server. We have a lot of control. So I guess my um recommendation, obviously, I'm in opposition of this, is to work with us, not against us. Again, we have a lot of control over how our patrons interact with us and each other. Um, if you're not together with someone when you come in, you don't get sat with them. We're following all the CDC guidelines as far as how close in proximity you can sit. And and others have said, it is a fraction of our guests we're seeing now than we saw even a month ago, never mind two months ago, um, when we had the the outdoor dining, which again was phenomenal by Nashua to pass. Um, so again, you know, I think what was striking to me is how the Health Department started the last call, which was basically saying, there is absolutely no evidence that this will work, but we got to try something. Well, I don't think we can just try anything. I don't think hope is a strategy. I think um, hope and optics isn't a reason to make this decision. I think it's because you follow the science, you follow the data, and not just generic data about cases, data about the decision you're making and how it affects those lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, I would like to speak. I would like to speak.
Name and address for the record.
Emily Saroy, ninety-two Harris Road.
Okay.
In Nashua.
All right.
Um, I, hi, um, I work at Boston Billiards um for Curt and Sue Mathias. Um, I find it extremely infuriating um that this is, this is conversation even needs to be happening and how detrimental this is going to be to our economy, to our business, again, that we are um a gaming facility and a lot of our profits go to a lot of people. Um, Curt and Sue are there constantly, making sure that everything is the way that it's supposed to be, the guidelines, um, masks. We, again, as someone had said, um, when people are not wearing their masks, they're asked to leave. We don't give them another shot. We we get them out. It's for the safety of my fellow coworkers, employees, and also people that are coming in there. Um, so to me, it's very infuriating that this is a conversation that needs to be happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none?
Hold on. I I spoke before, but I didn't use my three minutes. Do you mind if I take thirty seconds just to reiterate something?
If you have something new to add.
I do.
Name and address, please.
My name is Lau. I live in New London, Connecticut. I work at BBC. I just wanted to point out that um I I've gone to Fox with the Mohegan Sun, and they've told friends of mine that they didn't have to wear masks, and they're not keeping the numbers down. It'd be like thirty people around a roulette table. And at BBC, they are extremely strict, and I think it's really bad to punish the people that are coming to you with honest feedback about what's going on with their employees. I don't know, you know, who's giving you the numbers on Walmart or Home Depot or Target, but I know for a fact that these guys are upfront and contacting the state as soon as they have uh what they consider to be a problem. And I think it's punishing the people that are giving you honest data. Maybe there could be something else put in place to keep an eye and monitor each place. That's it.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, we're going to end the public comment period. New business ordinances.
Don't we typically just read these?
Madam Clark?
Thank you. First reading of ordinance oh twenty forty-four relative to a ban on certain indoor activities for certain businesses starting at nine thirty PM.
Do I have a motion? Alderman Lopez.
Uh, if so needed, I'll make a motion to refer this to the Board of Aldermen for the December twenty-second meeting.
So your motion is what?
To recommend. I mean, typically, we would have first reading, and then we would refer it to a committee. So what the the script we all received was, was that I should make a motion to refer this to tomorrow's meeting.
Okay. Did you want to move it to the next meeting with a positive recommendation, Alderman Lopez?
Uh, I mean, if I make a motion to that nature, does that open discussion? Or, I mean, this wasn't exactly a public health presentation, so I don't even know what this format is.
Do you have a motion, Alderman Lopez?
Yeah, I moved to discuss.
Okay.
I'd like to speak on the motion.
You can.
Um, okay, so um, I'm frustrated by the, a lot of the feedback that I heard in the the way that it indicates a lack of trust for our Public Health Department, um, our Board of Health, which is not the Public Health Department. It's, you know, two um doctors who have specialties in disease transmission and spread, um, and then a pediatrician as well, who has his own area of expertise as well. These are medical professionals, which I think um have pretty good insight into this situation. But my frustration isn't with the people who are particularly speaking um tonight. It's more that as a as a nation, this is where we're at. Like, we started this outbreak with believing that we could pray it away, or that it would be gone by April, or that it would not be a big deal, even though all health professionals uh in involved were saying, no, this is a major outbreak. We need to be taking it seriously. So there's been a lot of pushback as to the validity of the medical science and the public health profession, and whether or not they're qualified to to make determinations. There's been a lot of uh individuals on the public of varying levels of expertise uh trying to educate themselves, trying to figure out exactly who to listen to, what's going on, what patterns are real. And we've gotten to the point where we will take what our own Public Health Department is collecting as data in a transparent method. These are our staff members that are paid to do this, and we're working double time through the summer, seven days a week, um, to manage this outbreak. And we're we're willing to dismiss them for a newspaper article that somebody searched for, trying to find a specific thing, and that's that's data. That's that's information from now on. Um, when the Board of Health made this recommendation, and when uh the doctor from the Board of Health spoke in public comment, he outlined exactly why we were taking these steps or why we were recommended to take these steps in terms of masks covering your face versus masks not covering your face, social distancing uh behaviors uh associated with with drinking, that kind of stuff. And that is not what people are choosing to address or comment on. They're instead choosing to focus on nine thirty. Why that time? Which is, I guess, an argument you would make for literally any time. Why do you open a restaurant at a certain time? Why is it after nine thirty is going to kill a restaurant? That's not one of their reasons for making this recommendation. When you look at the traffic coming from Massachusetts, that was an early factor, but it's one that people have seized on as the only reason that we could possibly be doing this. While making the argument that if we put a curfew in place here in Nashua, then people will just go elsewhere, that argument doesn't seem to transfer over to, there's a curfew in place in Massachusetts, so obviously people from right over the border may be coming right here. We are asked to look at all of the data that restaurants have as being accurate, more accurate than our Public Health Department's data that's collected, more accurate than epidemiologists. But we don't see that data. That's not transparent. That's not anything that we have access to right now. We don't have any of the records or the the bookkeeping from any of the businesses that are saying anything from they will one hundred percent close and get rid of all of their employees and never open again to, this is going to hurt them, and they're going to have to scale back, and only the single mothers are going to be the ones who hurt. We're hearing a lot of claims that are going all over the map from one side while expecting a perfect understanding of public health to come from another. And I don't think that's a fair um status quo. I think Public Health has made recommendations and provided data based on those recommendations. I think as alderman, we've been here before. If anybody has a short memory, the first time we passed the masking ordinance, we had a lot of public opposition to that, too, that was specifically organized to be against that. When we had to pass the amendment to the masking ordinance because people weren't taking it on themselves to actually do it, and restaurants were enabling that specifically according to the complaints that we had, um, we we still got a lot of pushback from that. And even after we passed that ordinance, the state of New Hampshire came in just prior to its own enacting its own statewide mask ordinance and find several places that they had been investigating repeatedly that are still pretty defiant and still maintaining that it's impossible to expect anybody to wear a mask if they're standing next to an oven. So the restaurant industry has had a learning curve, as had everybody else. I don't think they're the only industry in the entire city of Nashua that has put considerable amounts of money and resources into personal protective equipment. I would argue that probably nursing homes, hospitals, um, any human services, our own city hall has also implemented extremely strict oversight. Um, I know a lot of programs have just straight up closed. Um, I know that most of the uh year, the senior center was closed, uh, Harts Pier support has been closed, the library uh has struggled. So this is something that's affecting the entire community. It's not just the restaurant industry. We aren't targeting the restaurant industry because it's a restaurant industry. We're targeting it because it's the industry that doesn't have to wear masks when they're doing business. That's how the ordinance is written specifically. Now, we have, as was referenced by one of the speakers, asked about the possibility of some places that might be able to do business while wearing masks of a different kind, such as gambling. while wearing masks of a different kind, such as gambling or um that type of thing. And that's gonna be up to the businesses to whether they're open to it and whether they can come up with a business model for it. If their business model says that they need to close entirely for the entire day, instead of cutting three hours off in the, in the evening that, which are identified as the, the highest risk due to being mostly drinking and not eating food or restaurants or dining or that kind of thing, then that's unfortunate. And that's something that we, we do have to look at from an economic perspective. But this is the Board of Public Health. We're being given a recommendation for public health reasons. Our failings when it comes to economic supports and coming up with creative ways to help businesses in the wintertime, the same way we did over the summer, and our failings at social structures and social supports, whether we're using the COVID money that was given to our state specifically to address COVID needs to help people keep from getting behind on their rent or not, whether we're marketing that to people. Those are different issues. We need to be having those issues be tackled by those committees and with those recommendations, both as an economic issue, our, our board has a planning and economic development committee, which should have been meeting to discuss this. And as a human affairs issue where we look at, these are extraordinary times. Maybe we need to be making sure that more people can access the supportive services we have. Personally, I, my job is, is to be an Alderman and to focus on the city of Nashua. I know there are several state representatives here who have that larger scope at the state level. So I'm sure they can take action when they're in session, but I don't have any faith in the state helping us. When they said they were gonna help with everybody with extra unemployment, they immediately implemented a system of overloading their own unemployment system and then trying to stagger out the number of people who could apply for it based on their, the, the last letter of their name and another witchcraft. Most people didn't even get the, the benefits that they were entitled to and just gave up. But those are the systems that should be in place, and that's where we should be applying our effort if we're gonna be looking at a statewide approach. With regards to a statewide mandate, I mean, the, the data in Nashua and our public health department is recommending we do that here. I don't know what's happening at the state level, but I do know that the logic of saying, well, one city shouldn't do anything because the state isn't doing anything, is the same that the state of Massachusetts faces. Why should Massachusetts put a curfew in when the entire country isn't doing that? There's a point where politicians have to take leadership and they have to start separating uh what their responsibilities are in terms of obligations to people's lives. I don't want to ruin somebody's life by having them lose their job, but I don't want to ruin somebody's life by enabling a scenario where they lose their life. A lot of the places that are most vulnerable and are, are suffering the highest casualties from COVID nineteen aren't getting them by their own activity. People from long-term care facilities aren't getting out, going out and partying like crazy. It's the staff and the people who are delivering things and the people who interact with that themselves that are doing it. So I'd love to believe the public saying, well, why don't you give us a chance? Why don't you start working with us? Why don't we? At this point, we understand what's going on. We should stop. That is not what I've seen. That's not the trend that, that's been happening. We've been talking about this one micro issue particularly since Thanksgiving, and the numbers have not gone down. There's been plenty of visibility. All of the restaurants have been involved in this conversation that are, that are here tonight. We haven't seen a reduction of, of, of transmission. I'm sure the public health would have, uh, the Board of Health would have liked to be off the hook for that. And I'm sure the hospitals that are treating people right now in their ICUs and the staff that are also working right now would love to have less people to treat, so they could go on making money on actually lucrative things like elective surgeries and that kind of thing. This is a, and, and a pandemic which is affecting all areas of business, all areas of the community. And we can't expect only one sector of it to, to shoulder the burden. And while that's true of the, the restaurant industry, it's also true of the health industry as well. We can't expect doctors to treat people who are intentionally taking more risk than is necessary, and we can't facilitate that behavior either.
Talk about your script.
Yeah, what's up with the script?
Well, the script does say that public comment is over to start with. But we were all given scripts where different assignments are made for who's gonna make motions and who's not. So as the liaison for the public, the Board of Health, I'm the one who made the motion for bringing this up for discussion.
Go to work tomorrow?
Laura, you're on mute.
Alderman Lopez. I mean, Alderman Clemmons, sorry.
Thank you, uh, President Wiltshire. I appreciate it. And I want to thank everybody that came tonight uh to speak. It's rare occasion when a hundred and fifteen people, actually at one point, I think we were at a hundred and twenty-five people come to address the Board of Aldermen. That's um, that's a very rare and unique occasion. And I've witnessed it maybe on my ten years or so that I've been on the board in an off, uh, I've witnessed it maybe three or four times. So I want to thank everybody for coming um and speaking this evening. Uh, I think what we have here is a, a, a problem that really is a federal problem that hopefully they're getting close to some kind of uh an agreement uh in Congress. Um, but it is, from what I, from what I can tell, uh, extremely short on its on, on the wants and, and needs uh for people. And I don't think that it's going to deliver the same kind of results that we had past this past spring, which was we had extra unemployment benefits. We had the twelve hundred dollar cash benefit. We had moratoriums on evictions. You know, and so you know, when we closed down and the state shut down at the beginning in, in, in April, you know, we had, there was protections in place to help people who were struggling and to help people who were uh hurt uh by the shutdowns. And even then, we saw uh a lot of our friends in the restaurant business close um right here in Nashua uh throughout the state, throughout the country, uh because they just, they couldn't survive. They couldn't survive being shut down without knowing when the next paycheck was coming. Um, and I understand what's been said this evening. Uh, I understand the, the hardworking people who here, who are just trying to make a living. We need, in my opinion, I'm, I'm, I'm going to support them uh this, this evening. Essentially, we have businesses such as uh Boston Billiards, who's well represented here tonight, but also some of the other uh restaurants, Louis Louis, the Flight Center, um Stella Blue. There was, there was more. These, these places are responsible. They play by the rules. They listen to the guidelines uh that come down from the governor. They listen to our ordinances. They enforce our ordinances. They make sure that they're taking extra precautions to make sure that people are healthy, to make sure that their patrons uh are abiding by these laws as well. And if the Board of Health thought that there was a problem and that there were individuals, individual restaurants where there was a problem, I didn't see that come out. But I would think that if there was these places where there was COVID hotspots in restaurants, because there were places where people weren't following the rules after nine thirty, that those should be identified and that those folks should be paid a visit by the, the, our Nashua Police Department and have them cited for not following the health codes. Uh, but I don't believe that that came out of the meeting. Furthermore, and probably more disturbing than anything else, is that I would venture to guess that the biggest offenders uh of not following social distancing rules and not abiding by the mask ordinance and things like that are places uh that close before nine o'clock and before nine thirty. Uh, I've been to some of them. I've seen that. I don't go back. Uh, what, you know, I walked into a couple of places here in Nashua. And, and, you know, I don't know what's happened. I've, I've put in my reports, but far as I know, I, I, I didn't get any follow-up. I don't know i- if they've been spoken to or, or, or what has happened. I'm not gonna name names. But these, these were places that I went into well before nine, nine o'clock at night, never mind nine thirty. And um, y- you know, as far as I'm concerned, this, this does not address the true issue. And the true issue to me is making sure that people are abiding by the laws that both this this board puts into place. And also the, the governor has enacted in order to keep us safe in, in restaurants. So with all of that being said, I have no intention of supporting uh a curfew. Uh, instead, I'm gonna support the hardworking men and women of Nashua in the restaurant industry. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Alderman Harriet Gaffray.
My question is actually to um whoever's representing corporate counsel through you, our chair, our president. I think I'm a little confused as what's happening right now, because I thought we were, this was something we were moving to the next day. So, so it looks like now we're gonna end up voting on this tonight. Is that correct?
Alderman Gaffray, tonight we were here to listen to the public and here to decide whether to pass this ordinance or not and send it on to the full board tomorrow night for vote, for final vote.
Okay, but if I guess I'm struggling with that because we have the full board here tonight. So we're voting rather to take it to the full board and do this again tomorrow. So if that's the case, then I'm gonna ask to move the question.
Okay. Frankie, if you don't stop interrupting like that, we're gonna have to disconnect you. So don't do it. Okay, on the motion to move the question, would the clerk please call the roll?
Uh, it, pardon, pardon, parliamentary inquiry?
Alderman Clemmons.
Yeah, I, I, to refresh my memory on what the vote uh or what the motion was, uh, please.
There was no motion.
Yeah, I made a motion open for discussion, so we would have to make a motion to refer to the Board of Aldermen.
The mo- the motion that he put before us was for discussion.
Correct.
And we all know that when it comes to the board, it's discussion. So I asked to move the question.
Okay, but I'm not sure.
I have to make another motion to move it to tomorrow. If you want to have the conversation tomorrow, Linda. What you could do.
Motion is to move the question. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Hang on. Say yes. Oh, no, I don't know. Move the question.
Uh, no.
Alderman Clea.
No.
Alderman Kelly.
No.
Alderman Dowd.
No.
Alderman Karen.
No.
Alderman Clemmons.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
Abstain?
On what grounds are you abstaining, Alderman Lopez?
I still don't understand. The, the question I think that Alderman Gaffray is trying to do is have us discuss this tomorrow night. But the only motion I made was to have the conversation we're having.
You, you can't abstain if you're here and you don't have a, a conflict, Alderman Lopez.
Okay. I don't, I'm not saying that I have a conflict. I'm saying I don't understand the questions. I'd prefer not to vote yea or nay.
The, the, the motion was to move the question.
Then vote.
So Madam President, what is the question that we're moving?
She wants to end debate.
Okay, I'm okay with that. Then yes.
Alderman Tenza.
No.
Alderman.
Not.
Jettie.
No.
Alderman Schmidt.
No.
Alderman Laws.
No.
Alderman Cleaver.
No.
Alderman Harriet Gaffray.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
No, and we do have Alderman Lou with us.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My vote is no.
You have thirteen, two yays and thirteen nays.
So that motion fails. Could I get a motion on the uh, on the ordinance?
Okay.
Alderman Clemmons.
I have a question.
I am gonna move to recommend indefinite postponement.
The motion is for indefinite postponement. Discussion on that motion.
Yes.
Alderman Gaffray.
Okay. What I was trying to get to, and I think wasn't getting accomplished, was the fact that if we're gonna discuss it tonight, then w- will we be able to vote on this tonight? Rather than push it to the Board of Aldermen tomorrow, because every last one of us are here tonight. And I, if, as I remember the rules, if we do that tonight, it doesn't have to go till tomorrow. And I don't have a problem with the conversation, but I have a problem if we're gonna have a two-hour conversation tonight and then go into it to the next day with the same rhetoric. That's the essence of it.
Attorney Clark.
That was my question.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna try to clarify that for you, Alderman Gaffray. Attorney Clark. This is a special Board of Aldermen meeting. There's no reason we can't make a motion for final passage this evening?
Yes, that is correct. You can have a final vote tonight.
Okay, thank you.
I'm good.
Thank you, Alderman Gaffray.
Can, can I say, can you pull, uh, Ben, can you pull yours out so we can continue?
Can I, well.
Alderman Clemmons.
I'm gonna amend my motion. Uh, instead of recommend indefinite postponement, I am going to make a motion to move for indefinite postponement and settle this this evening. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
We can do that. Thank you. Alderman Kelly.
Uh, thank you. So President Wiltshire, I think my, my question here is, I I also wasn't sure whether we were gonna vote on this this evening. It seems like we are willing to do that. But I feel like we have a very big missing piece of, we haven't really heard anything. I thought we would hear something from the Public Health Board um in terms of their recommendation and any information they have.
We did hear from Dr. Capetta.
Sure, but that was during public comment. He did say he was sort of talking during public comments. So I, I guess I expected a bit of a presentation from the Board of Health to explain to us why they feel this is the way we should go. We got an email, but I guess I expected a presentation.
Okay, well, we didn't have a presentation, so I'm not sure that maybe we could postpone it till tomorrow night. Anyone else? Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I'd like to thank everybody for being here tonight. I think this is spectacular. We never get this kind of interest, and it is, it, it's so important for us to have this kind of input. We do know that the numbers are rising, and we do know that Nashua is uh in the hub of it. We are red, I believe, in two of the three uh segments of decision-making on this, and it's, it's essential that we do something. The question is, is this gonna do anything for us? And I personally don't believe that it targets the right organization. Nobody who works in food service, in entertainment, in dining, or, or whatever in this city has any reason to question whether the board supports them. We went out of our way this summer to make sure that they did well. Downtown uh opened up and we saw the rest of the country follow us in this. And it was, it was important for us to support uh the restaurants and the evening entertainment. I, I don't support this. I think that there are probably other ways to go, like increasing the fines on this, making it a sincere attempt to punish people that are doing the wrong and stop punishing the people that are doing it correctly. I would be glad to vote on this tonight, and uh I'll vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Clea.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, first, I, I would have to bend to whatever the board want, but I want to make it very clear that a lot of the public felt that this would be voted on tomorrow, and there is a big Board of Ed meeting tonight that they've gone to. that a lot of the public felt that this would be voted on tomorrow and there is a big Board of Ed meeting tonight that they've gone to. And they skipped this meeting so that they could have their, but they were hoping to have their comment tomorrow. So I, I want everybody to take that into consideration. If we do vote today, I understand that um, oftentimes we go on and on and on, and then we repeat ourselves again. And I, I took this meeting and I reported this meeting as being in lieu of going to a committee. Um, and I would hate to, um, that, uh, my constituents who would want to speak on it. I, I feel that we're doing them a disservice just so that we can um, end this tonight. But now, having said that, um, if you'll indulge me, I'd I'd like to kind of make some comments here. One is, um, under no circumstances do I believe our Board of Health, um, members ever made a knee jerk reaction. I think they made a thoughtful reaction based on what their job is. Their job is to keep the public, um, safe. And I believe that that's exactly what their intent is. Now, while I don't feel that um, that you actually even goes far enough, I think what we need to do is much with um, Alderman Schmidt and um, Alderman Clemmons brought up. And I have already um, spoken to um, legal about eating our fines and, and pushing towards that. I've, I've spoken to Chief Cargan. I've spoken to many of the shop owners saying that um, be prepared because I want to, you know, kind of come down harder than we've been able to. Um, I don't know how that's going to come out. I don't know how the vote's going to come. And I don't know how um, the, the other board members feel as I've not spoken to them about it. But um, I have started that, that process to try to get something in that really will push this down. I did ask at the Board of Health, is it too little, too late? Um, I kind of got that feeling that yes, it is a little too, little too late. But I don't think it should stop us. I think we still have to go forward. You know, this has truly been the hardest decision that I think that I hike. I, I have been such a strong advocate for um, masks. I, I, I like to consider myself the, the, the queen of mask. I know some people would call me maybe the mask nag. Goodness gracious, probably something even worse. But um, the, the bottom line is that I believe in masks. I believe in social distancing. I believe in doing everything that we can, but I don't believe that just because um, there's a certain group of people in restaurants and so on that are not wearing masks, um, that they're any worse than some of the places that I've seen. I, I just went, um, I just went to a store today and while almost everybody there had the mask, um, there were two people that, that had masks with their nose hanging out. Um, one was a mother that had young children with her. Um, and, and it just surprised me that she, she would do that. Her children had masks on, but her nose was hanging out of the mask and not one person at that store said anything. Um, I've gotten um, calls from people who have gone to um, conve- small convenience stores who employees as well as um, people and aren't wearing masks. I think that's really where we have to come down. And um, that's why I kind of put the ordinance through is to not single out a single entity, a business entity, but to really in fact, kind of look at that. And I do want to make one clarification. Someone said um, something about, you know, uh, the churches and so on. Um, to the best of my knowledge, churches have to wear masks. Um, and they are doing social distancing. And our ordinance says, if I'm not mistaken, I don't really have it right in front of me, so I apologize. I put it off to the side and put something on it. But basically, our ordinance that they're trying to put through here says any activity that cannot be done without a mask after nine thirty PM. So even if there were church at nine thirty PM, they would not be shut down. Um, so that's really what it, what this all um, comes down to. So that would mean that if a restaurant or um, another business such as a casino, um, would be willing to operate while people kept their masks on, they could stay open. Um, bottom line is, who's going to go to a restaurant where you can't take your mask off and so on? So um, I think we can do better. I think we can do better as a community. Um, and I think this is a wake up call that we may need to do something. But I also agree that people are going to leave Nashua, going to go to other places that aren't quite as um, stringent as we are. And then they're going to bring it back here and they're going to meet with their families and so on. So um, for that reason, I just, I just can't um, support this. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I had my hand up as a follow up to my question like two minutes ago.
Alderman Kelly, go ahead.
Thank you. So, as I stated, I felt that Board of Public Health should be speaking on this before we even debate it.
Thank you.
We pulled it out of committee where we would have talked to it. And if it wasn't talked to, we would table it. And they haven't spoken on it. So if they're not prepared to speak on it, I want to move to table because I want to know what their point of view is before we even talk about this.
Mayor Donches, is there anyone on the meeting tonight from the Board of Health that we haven't heard from?
Director Badley was on just a minute ago.
Hi, President Wiltshire. Yes, um, Bobby Badley, uh, Director for the Division of Public Health and Community Services. We, we actually did have a presentation uh, that Angela Constantino spoke through um, during the public comment. Did you want that presentation? We weren't, we weren't sure that that was going to be presented this evening, but we were prepared for it.
If you have a presentation, I, I would welcome that.
Please. Okay, Angela, are you still there?
Sure, um, I'll just go ahead and share my screen.
Thank you.
So, um, we really, what we have today in our presentation is a brief situational report on COVID nineteen and then also the discussion of the cluster outbreak and watch list data that I reviewed in my public comment. So to start off with our situational report, in regards to our case activity, last week in Nashua, we had three hundred and ninety-four new cases for an average of fifty-six new cases a day. There are currently three thousand two hundred and ninety-nine cumulative cases in Nashua. Of those cases, approximately eight hundred and fifty-five are currently active and infectious. And DPHCS is currently following seven hundred and sixteen. We've had five additional deaths in Nashua since last Monday. Forty-nine total deaths and a case fatality rate of one point four percent. Our hospitalization rate in Nashua is at three point three percent compared to the state's rate of.
Question to ask.
Sauce.
So in regards to community level transmission, the entire state is experiencing substantial community level transmission and is considered in the red. In Nashua, we are currently exceeding two out of three indicators that push us into substantial transmission. Over the past fourteen days, we'd ha- we've had eight hundred and thirty point three new cases per hundred thousand people. We passed into substantial in this category when we surpassed a hundred new cases per hundred thousand people back in October. We are also considered substantial in the percent positivity category. In the past week, there has been four hundred and forty-six tests conducted on average each day in Nashua. And fifty-four of those tests have been positive each day, which gives us a percent positivity rate of twelve point three percent, up about two percent since last week. For comparisons, the state's percent positivity rate is at eight point seven percent. This past week, we pushed from minimal into moderate in regards to new hospitalizations. Last week, we had two point two new hospitalizations per hundred thousand over two weeks. This week, we've had ten point one new hospitalizations per hundred thousand over two weeks. Um, and we will be pushed into substantial in this category if we surpass twenty new standardized hospitalizations. Um, Bobby, would you like to add anything about the capacity of the hospitals and our joint partner calls?
Uh, yes, thank you, Angela. So with our joint partners and our um, information that we have been receiving from the hospitals, we've learned that they are being challenged with their staffing capacity to be able to maintain um, uh, certain services. They've uh, cut back on elective surgeries uh, and have discontinued those because of staffing capacity and because of the increase in spread of COVID. Uh, we have learned that our ICUs continually are challenged. Um, we heard today that at least one in one of our hospitals, uh, ten out of their eleven ICU beds are filled. And uh, last week, the, they actually had to open up their second ICU unit because of the number of um, cases that were in their ICU. Uh, the hospitals are also reporting ventilation use. What we've learned is that they are able to, as much as they can, maintain uh, the surge of what they're seeing in-house, but we have been hearing constantly about the challenges that they are having uh, with staffing. Um, and those challenges are because they, again, um, you know, with the staff that have been uh, reported as having COVID, it has been picked up in the community, which then means that they have to go on either isolation and then once in isolation, all of their contacts or um, uh, staff that work with them either have to go on quarantine themselves. And so then that decreases the amount of staffing that's available in the hospitals. Um, and so when we look at community transmission, the impact is impacting the hospitals to the point now where they have been seeking um, support and, and workers from outside of the hospitals to help them maintain their services. Our emergency departments are um, continually see increase in number of patients coming into the ED uh, with an increase in the number of patients that are presenting with COVID illnesses. And so, uh, as a result of this, uh, with this metrics that we see here, uh, we've met two out of the three substantial measures. If the hospital's um, rate goes up above twenty point, twenty, twenty, uh, then that will also be in uh, the red as well. And it puts our state in a very precarious predicament. Thank you, Angela.
Thanks, Bobby. Um, so this is um, a graph that I talked through earlier. But this is in, so in New Hampshire, all of our COVID nineteen infections are categorized by transmission type, which is defined by where or how an individual, individual believes that they got sick. Um, so you can see the highest um, percent of cases have no idea where they may have gotten sick from. Um, and then after that, contact with someone with COVID nineteen um, is the second, uh, followed by cluster associated, followed by community transmission. Um, so a lot of the unclear, unknown bar, it's going to be the community-based transmission. Um, it's people who have no idea where they may have gotten sick from. They don't have a family member with COVID nineteen. They've only gone about their regular community business. Um, and they just can't pinpoint an exact um, target as to where they got sick. And this is the vast majority of our cases. Um, I see it in our disease investigations every day. Many people have no idea where they got sick from. Um, so this just, this isn't just happening in families. Um, it's happening out in the community. Just regular people walking by others. Um, and it's not just in living rooms. Um, it's everywhere. So this is the watch list data that I also talked through. Um, so this is um, we have, we have, we track all of the cases in Nashua. Um, and these are all the facilities that have either experienced an outbreak cluster or exposure with potential for community spread. Um, so these are categorized into these uh, six separate facility types. So we have our community groups, which are churches, clubs, sports or gyms, healthcare facilities, housing facilities, restaurants, bars and clubs, school or childcare facilities, and then workplace or businesses. Um, so you can see that the majority of reports are from workplaces and businesses and then also healthcare facilities. Um, and this uh, makes sense because um, you know, our healthcare facilities, they're high-risk exposures and um, we put those at a higher priority at both the health department and the staff in the healthcare facilities, put those at high priority. So reporting these exposures is a high priority for both us and the staff at the facilities. Um, and then also workplace and businesses. These are general workplaces and businesses uh, in Nashua. Any place that does business and employs people would be on this uh, category. I'd also just like to mention that any patron case, whether it be at a workplace or business or a restaurant or club, um, or at a community group is going to be under-reported, um, because the patron has to be aware of the exposure in order to identify that they were associated with the cluster or outbreak. So if the patron doesn't know that there was an exposure at the facility, they cannot identify themselves as part of the outbreak when we do the investigation. So this is just um, that information summarized. Um, so on the left, we have the breakdown of the number of reported cases per facility in the past three months. And then on the right, we have the percentage breakdown of exposure reports to DPHCS. So our most highly reported sector in general is workplaces and businesses. Um, but these do tend to have less cases associated with each report. Um, another highly reported facility is healthcare. Twenty-six percent of our exposure reports are associated with the healthcare facility. And like I said before, this makes sense because any case at our long-term care facility or hospitals is high-risk and prioritized. Um, and then in regards to restaurants, bars and clubs, thirteen percent of our total outbreak, cluster and exposure reports are for these facilities. And the majority of cases that are associated, that are in the restaurants are associated with staff members. About twenty-five percent are in patrons, uh, likely because of the under-reporting in patrons. Um, and that's what we have for the presentation. Bobby, did you want to add anything else to this?
And this is um, based on this presentation that um, is presented here from October to December. Uh, it's also where we've seen the um, exponential increase in the number of cases that have occurred here, uh, not just in Nashua, in our region and in the state. Uh, we do know when there are activities that allow for people to come together in, in closer settings, uh, where their masks are not being used is where we're seeing the increase in exposure. Um, and this is what we're trying to prevent going into uh, you know, this next few months. Um, you know, of this pandemic. We do realize that a vaccine, um, a couple of vaccines in fact, are going to be administered um, over the next probably four to six months. But we still have this three-month period where it's going to be really important for uh, vigilance to be underway uh, with everyone, because even after folks get that first vaccine, there's still a twenty-eight day period before the next vaccine is given. And then um, in between that time, um, the vaccine doesn't really start to kick in to uh, work effectively until after that second dose is received. So you can see that we're still at a critical period. Uh, we do and have heard from our hospitals over the past at least three weeks, uh, that the number of cases is starting to impact their ability to provide the services. The thing about the hospitals is that if elective surgeries or um, people can't get in for other things, and that creates a bigger problem, you know, in our community with individuals. If the emergency rooms are full of individuals going in for COVID, if a person has a heart attack or there is some other um, accident, then we, we're, we're compromising our ability to be able to provide those services uh, when we're not doing what we can do to prevent uh, COVID in the way, in the measures that we've outlined uh, previously. Um, and so with the idea of uh, cutting back on those activities that allow for the mask to be removed, which we know do prevent the spread of infection, uh, that's what we're focused on. Activities where people gather together, um, you know, even in small groups are, are considered now high-risk activities. And so that's what we're focused on. How do we make sure that people can have a future for their families? And I know we're talking about the economic impact of this. Um, if we were to do a cost benefit analysis on the cost of the hospital uh, stay, the ICU stays, the emergency room visits, um, and the, the long number of days that people stay in the hospitals, uh, that's going to impact uh, economic uh, situations for individuals and their families as well. It's not, this is not an easy, um, you know, to, this decision or conversation to be had. Uh, but it is something that's important and we need to think about the safety and the well-being of our members in our community. Thank you, President.
Thank you, Bobby. And thanks for the presentation. Very much appreciated. Okay, so I'm going to ask the attorney. Attorney Clark, if we want to pass this, we need to suspend the rules uh, for a second reading. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, I think that would be your, your normal procedure. And, and I apologize for before. I think there was just some general confusion. If this was meant to be sort of a committee meeting that was going to send a recommendation to the full board tomorrow, or if this was meant to be the actual substantive, um, uh, you know, meeting and vote on, on the legislation. I, I think I just didn't understand originally what, what the intent was.
Okay. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I move, uh, I'm changing my motion to move to suspend the rules to allow for a second reading.
The motion is to suspend the rules to allow for a second reading. Would the clerk please call the Alderman Cleaver? Will the clerk please call the Alderman Clay?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to make sure that would mean that we would vote on it this evening. Is that correct? If we do a second reading tonight. Okay, thank you.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Madam President.
Alderman Jettie. Sorry.
So I agree with Attorney Clark. I think and I think some of the other aldermen as well about the confusion. This was, I believe this was advertised as a meeting of, before the full board for discussion. And it certainly left me and I'm, I'm sure others with the impression, you know, that this would be an opportunity for the public to weigh in. I, I too thought that there would be a presentation from the Board of Health. And that, you know, after hearing from, from everyone, we would you know, have a chance to, to think about this and then take it up at tomorrow night's meeting.
That was the intent, Alderman Jettie.
That was the intent.
It was the intent.
So I think, you know, moving to, you know, to try to vote on this tonight is, is, you know, is against the intent. You know, and I, and I think in good faith, we should not, you know, we should follow, you know, what we advertised. You know, we, we said this was going to be a a meeting where we would have discussion. And then, you know, the implication was that we would, you know, take it up tomorrow night and vote on it tomorrow night. So I, I question, you know, why we would be moving, suspending the rules to have a second reading tonight and not just, you know, take it up, have a second reading tomorrow night and vote on it tomorrow night. And ha, and give people who you know, who, who also couldn't attend tonight and wanted to, you know, express opinions and opportunity to do, to do so as well tomorrow night. So I, I'm wondering, you know, I, I, I know that Alderman Clemmons, he was a great believer in, in on, you know, full discussion of, of matters and you know, I think, you know, would, would not want to use parliamentary procedure to try to cut off discussion or debate. I'm, I'm wondering if he would, you know, withdraw his motion and that we would just, you know, I think, I thought Alderman Lopez's original motion, which frankly, Madam President, you you know, didn't either understand what he was saying or gave him a hard time about. His original motion was, you know, to refer this to the full board tomorrow night for, for a vote, I thought. So I'm wondering if Alderman Clemmons would be willing to withdraw his motion, and then we could just refer it to the full board for a vote for a second reading tomorrow night and a vote tomorrow night.
Alderman Clemmons?
No, I would, I, I'm not going to do that. I would encourage you to vote yes or no, whether or not you want to vote on this tonight or tomorrow.
Okay. Alderman Lopez.
So I just want to clarify that that was what my confusion was, is because when we typically take business up before the board, it gets read and then the president just announces where it's going. So I thought you were going to be announcing to go to tomorrow. On the script, it says that I'm sponsoring it, and I wasn't sure whether you wanted me to do that or whether we were opening for discussion. So that's why I opened discussion.
Okay, so the motion before us now is to suspend the rules to allow for a second reading. You can vote yea or nay, and then we can take it up after that, whatever comes in the vote.
If we vote nay, though, does that automatically bump it to the next meeting? Because Alderman Clemmons did just make a motion to indefinitely postpone it.
He withdrew it.
Okay.
So
through that motion.
Okay.
So Madam President, would, would it be in order for me to make a motion to table until tomorrow night?
It would be in order. I mean,
Then I make that motion.
Attorney Clark?
Can you please wait to be recognized?
Trying to get recognized.
Okay. So your motion is to table, which is not debatable. So would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
No.
Alderman Clay.
No.
Alderwoman Kelly.
No.
Alderman Dowd.
No.
Alderman Karen.
No.
Alderman Clemmons.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
No.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
No.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have seven yays and eight nays.
That motion fails?
Yeah.
And we are back to the motion for suspend the rules to allow for a second reading. Further discussion on that motion, Alderman Dowd.
Yes. Quite frankly, I'm not sure we had a first reading of the motion, although I think it was the motion that was read by, by City Clerk Lovering. So that was the first motion. In order to do anything with this before tomorrow night, it would have to have had a, a second reading. So what Alderman Clemmons is doing now is suspending the rules to allow for a second reading tonight. Then there would, if that passes, then there would have to be another motion, correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Clark, to have final vote on final passage, which would, could occur tonight or tomorrow night. And I thought that we should probably go around the room and have every alderman speak once before anybody spoke more than once.
Running the meeting, Alderman Dowd.
Excuse me?
I'm good.
So you know, and then, and then see where everybody stands and whether it makes sense to even address that motion, but go ahead.
Anyone else on the motion to suspend the rules for a second reading? Alderman Tenza, do you have your hand up?
No, Madam President, sorry.
Oh, you were, you had your pen up. I'm sorry. Alderman Lopez.
I'm opposed to the second reading because I think as Alderman Clay pointed out, if people are expecting to be here but chose to go to the Board of Education meeting, I don't think it's fair to just run this right through. We barely even had the Public Health Department speak. And I appreciate that they were allowed to after we brought it up and pointed it out, but that's not our normal means of doing business. Normally, we have a presentation and then public comment on issues when we're having a public hearing format, and I think this has been kind of disorganized tonight. So I mean, I'm opposed to it just because I think people should have more time to digest what was presented to them tonight. And the public really doesn't even know what we're doing at this point.
Okay. Anyone else? Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I think what we had here was some confusion from an alderman. Our procedure should have been, when it was under his first reading, all one alderman had to do, and usually traditionally by our procedure, is the sponsoring alderman to make the recommendation of final passage. That never was done. And then we got into this whole clean-cut, roundtable kind of debate on it. So now we're kind of spinning our wheels. So, but I just want to make that point that I think, Madam President, you ran the meeting well. Somebody just did not do their due diligence and make the proper recommendation of final passage and open it to discussion. And then we discussed it. So thank you, Madam President.
As a point of personal privilege, we have never recommended final passage without a second reading.
Okay, anyone else? Will the clerk please call the roll?
All right, Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
I had my hand raised, but
I didn't see you. I'm sorry.
I might have not had my video on, so that might be. So I just wanted to respond to some of the things that were said. I think that there are multiple people who are confused about this format. I think it would be unfair of us to push this forward if there are other people who want to weigh in. I did just look back at the outline and it did say that, you know, it was anticipated referral for tomorrow evening. So I don't think anyone was out of order in trying to figure out where that was going. And I will not be supporting suspending the rules at this time.
Okay. Anyone else before I call the Alderman Gathright? Alderman Gathright, did you have your hand up? You're on mute.
I know, I saw it. Ditto to Alderwoman Kelly.
Okay. Motion is to suspend the rules to allow for a second reading. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clay.
No.
Alderwoman Kelly.
No.
Alderman Dowd.
No.
Alderman Karen.
No.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
No.
Alderman Schmidt.
No.
Alderman Laws.
No.
Alderman Cleaver.
No.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
No.
Alderman Mulcher.
No.
You have three yays and twelve nays.
And that motion fails. Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I think that it would be in our best interest if we continue the discussion with the alderman to get their, their views if, if we're going to carry this forward to tomorrow night. So we don't have to have a complete reiteration of all of the testimony again. If somebody new that likes to speak in public here, in public tomorrow, that's fine. But I think this is the meeting that, that we should have all the aldermen give their views on, on the legislation so that tomorrow night we're not having to go through another two hours of discussion.
That was the original intent this evening, Alderman Dowd.
It's okay. I'd like to give my opinion.
You, you're up.
All right. I'm going to start by saying that I'm opposed to passing this legislation. And I will say that I always support, or most always support, the Public Health Department. And as when we discussed the mask ordinance, I made the comment that if we didn't support the public health, what, you know, why do we have them? In this instance, though, the Board of Aldermen has to take a bigger role. The reason being that we're talking about individuals suffering loss of income, loss of home, not being able to feed their kids. And, and also we're punishing, we put rules in place at the beginning of the pandemic that these establishments are actually abiding by and, and to a great degree. And I, I have not seen, you know, I worked in logistics for forty years. I have not seen enough data pushing it to a curfew as opposed to enforcing the, the rules we already have in place. And I can tell you, if we pass this ordinance, who's going to enforce it? I can tell you that the Police Department on the second, third shift, for shorthand, that they can't be out going into every restaurant to see if they're open and serving liquor or not. And I, I think we've already heard from the Board of Health that they don't have people. They're working hard all day doing testing and all the other types of things with the pandemic. I, I think that we're punishing too many businesses and, and individuals that have already suffered enough. They have followed all of the guidelines that we've given them up to date as far as outside dining, mass, putting up separating barriers, you know. But now to shut them down completely is, is something even more severe. And somebody would have to tell me, what's the difference between nine o'clock at night and nine-thirty at night? None. If they're holding the same, if they're doing to the same guidelines all day long, a couple more hours at night, it's not going to make a difference. I think this was a, a concern that people who are coming up from Massachusetts, and I've heard from a number of the establishments, that's not the case. Another thing is, if we close these people down at nine-thirty, besides losing their jobs and their homes and everything else, the people from Nashville that want to be out after nine-thirty are going to go to Manchester. And we've already heard that their outbreak's even bigger, and you're more likely to have people coming back from Manchester with COVID than if they went in our establishments that are playing by the rules. So for all those reasons and many more, I do not support this curfew. There may be some additional steps we could take without closing these establishments. But as far as an out-and-out curfew, I think that's too far, too much at this time.
Further discussion? Alderman Jettie.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I would encourage my fellow aldermen to to think about the fact that we have a Public Health Department. We have a Board of Health. The Board of Health has three doctors on it. The Department of Health has, the, the director, the medical director is an infectious disease specialist. We have an epidemiologist on staff. The Director of Public Health is a doctor of public health. These people are much more qualified, certainly than I am to judge the information. You know, the, you know, there's, there's a plethora of information that is constantly being disseminated in, in, in many times, very conflicting information. They're in a much better position to analyze that to, to to analyze the, the statistics as to what is happening. I've watched the Board of Health meetings. You know, my, my fellow aldermen, they are telling us that, that we are in a crisis. This, this is a very serious situation. The, you know, the, the directive isn't, you know, isn't just to, you know, to, to avoid going to bars at nine-thirty at night. You know, the, you know, the overall directive is to stay safer at home. Yeah, think about all of the public service announcements we received before Thanksgiving, and we're getting now, them now again before Christmas. They're telling us, don't congregate with people outside your own family bubble, the people that you live with. You know, they're telling us we shouldn't visit our children. We shouldn't visit our parents unless we live with them. You know, I saw Dr. Fauci today talking about how, you know, he's, he spent Thanksgiving with just he and his wife. They visited their children via Zoom. He's planning on doing the same thing for Christmas. That's, that's the message that we're getting. You know, the message, you know, isn't telling us how we can go to a bar or a restaurant more safely. The message is, you shouldn't be going. You know, it's not just wearing a mask. A mask is not a magic thing that, that keeps you from getting COVID. It's a combination of things. Wearing a mask helps. Keeping distances, you know, you know, six feet, some people say ten or twelve feet. Washing your hands. You know, don't, don't socialize with people outside your bubble. You know, these are all steps that we have to, you know, it's not just one thing, it's all of these things that we have to do to, to avoid getting this disease and spreading it to others. You know, we, when, when people talk about, uh, you know, you know, you know, the, the lack of evidence, I mean, there's certainly plenty of evidence. I don't, you know, I don't think any of you doubt the fact that that COVID is spread, you know, by, uh, by droplets, by vaporized droplets that are emitted from one person who has COVID emitted into the air through their mouth or their nose. So that's, that's the purpose of the mask, you know, to, to cut down on that. The purpose of the distancing is to stay away from people. So you don't, you know, you don't get exposed to the, these, these vapors. Well, we, we know, so we know that. Now, when people go to a restaurant or a bar, you know, they have to take their mask off to eat and drink. And, you know, you've been at, at bars, you know, you, you know what it's like, people that take the, you know, they're not staying, you know, distanced. Uh, and they're certainly not, uh, keeping, you know, uh, you know, staying within their, their family bubble, their, their, you know, there are strangers there. So I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's a bad situation encouraging people, allowing people to go to these places is probably a bad idea to begin with. Now, our Health Department, our Board of Health is telling us, you know, that this is a step that we ought to be doing to, uh, to, you know, to help, you know, prevent the, the spread of this disease. I mean, we're, we're talking about, you know, vaccines starting to become available. It's going to be a while before we get the vaccine. It's going to be a while before enough of us are vaccinated. You know, not once, but twice. Uh, so that we can safely go back to normal. This is, that's, that's a long ways away. Now, the people that spoke tonight, I, you know, I, I've read their emails, I heard their testimony, I understand. You know, how this is adversely affecting their, you know, the, the, the businesses, it's adversely affecting the business. It's adversely affecting the employees. You know, these people are going to, you know, suffer. But the restaurant, the hospitality business isn't the only business being affected by this virus. There are a lot of businesses that are closed. There are a lot of people who are unemployed. You know, the federal government, you know, and, and the state government came up with, you know, you know, ways to try to help people get through this period. Um, and the federal government, I think today, uh, you know, passed more legislation. They say that after the, the new Congress, uh, gets into office, that, you know, that they'll, they will be doing more. And, you know, hopefully, I mean, I, I think this is, you know, something you know, that we all ought to be, uh, participating in. And, you know, and I, I wish that, uh, you know, that we use the, you know, the federal, you know, federal government money to pay people to stay home until this thing gets, gets over with. And to help these people, you know, that spoke tonight about, you know, how, how they're afraid of losing their jobs. You know, I think, you know, the, that, that there is, there is help coming, you know, they, you know, the legislation that passed today and increased unemployment compensation. There's a stimulus money that's coming through. And I heard that the restaurant business in particular is going to be, you know, you know, given, uh, you know, money in, in the form of, uh, grants or loans or things, you know, you know, th- th- there are things that, that the government is doing to help you people. And, uh, you know, I, I think, I mean, you know, I think that, um, you know, hopefully that that's, that's what, what will happen. But to, to say that, you know, because you need a job, um, and I understand that, that we ought to be telling people to go out and expose themselves to this disease. You know, risk getting sick, risk spreading it to other people, risk death. You know, risk causing disease and death to other people. I, I, I think we're, we're losing sight of what our priorities are. You know, and the, um, the, uh, Alderman Dowd mentioned enforcement, you know, and how the police can't do this. I spoke to Chief Carrigan. Chief Carrigan said that they will enforce whatever laws we pass, they will enforce it. He said, this is a very serious matter. If we pass this ordinance, they will enforce it. So, you know, the argument that the police can't enforce this, or the Department of Health can't enforce this, uh, you know, that's, that's not, that's not a reason not to do this. There may be other reasons. But I'm going to support our Board of Health, I'm going to support people, uh, you know, I think know a whole, a lot more about this than I do. And, um, you know, to, to, to tell these, um, these doctors who, who are volunteers that, uh, thank you for your recommendation, but, you know, we're, we're going to, uh, we, we, we think we know better. I, I think is a slap in, in their faces. And, and I think is, um, you know, is, is, is not the intelligent way of approaching this very, very serious.
Your time is up.
Pandemic. Thank you.
No, unacceptable.
Thank you, Madam President.
Sorry for the interruption. Would you please not interrupt when the Aldermen is speaking? You're not helping your case any. Alderman Lopez.
Well, I agree with Alderman Jettie specifically that the government is not doing enough. Um, I, I hope some help is coming. Um, I'm glad it took them nine months to actually get around to the second half of a stimulus that we've all known was coming. As far as I've been watching, Public Health has been saying, we're going to have a huge wave of outbreak in the fall since the spring. We've been continually warned about this and I mean, I personally, I'm not waiting for, for Washington to figure out what they're doing because it takes them forever. And I don't think that the state is positioned needed to act quickly. That's why I am particularly, um, motivated to do at least something that we can specific to Nashua to protect Nashua is because that's something I can do. I think government indifference or government politicking has been going on all year and that's, this is a heavily self-inflicted wound, not only because we didn't take steps to prevent outbreaks before they really broke out. But then we also had extremely mixed mis-messaging on what we were supposed to do in order to, uh, to combat this thing. And it's made people extremely divisive. While Alderman, uh, Jettie was talking, I don't know if everybody else sees it and to be frank, I don't know if this is, that would be considered public comment or not, but there was a lot of comments popping up about people who were overtly stating they are not going to stay away from their families for Christmas. They're absolutely going to do whatever they want. And that it's up to the person who's worried to stay home. And that's the problem is we're giving a platform for people to interact and make their own choices on behalf of everybody else in the room. To shed a little bit of light on what was discussed in some of the Board of Health meetings that might have kind of gotten buried is the justification for the nine thirty timeframe was originally nine and that was not because just Massachusetts had a curfew. It was brought to our attention at the time from somebody working in a restaurant that you were getting a whole bunch of people coming up and we need to be worried about super spreader events before Thanksgiving because after nine, there was this whole bunch of people. But the justification that the Board of Health is actually, was actually paying attention to was the reasoning that Massachusetts put that curfew in place in the first place. Massachusetts didn't just spin a wheel and put nine o'clock on there either. They looked at times of, of risk and exposure and what can they do to limit the spread without impairing their entire business and their, their infrastructure. I'm approaching this more from a perspective of at the growth rate that we're seeing, we are going to have much more draconian measures put in place at some point if we don't stop what's happening now. We saw a massive surge after Thanksgiving. We're seeing that surge continue into Christmas. The, the New Year's is another major drinking holiday. So we're looking at another, at an upcoming period of at least two weekends where there's a major holiday and there's going to be a lot of people who are interested in going out and celebrating. And then, yeah, after that, they're probably going to go to to house parties and all that kind of stuff. Whereas if they didn't get started and they weren't already intoxicated, they're more likely to make safer decisions or to think things through a little bit more clearly than they would be after having a couple of drinks and being out at 11 and, and having met somebody at a bar that they want to continue the night with. So the Public Health Department and the Board of Health is pointing us towards this because it's a specific intersection of risk factors. Yes, there isn't specific data to what would happen if you do a curfew in Nashville, New Hampshire under these exact circumstances. There's plenty of data over what happens when people stop getting into a room and breathing on each other. There's plenty of data that supports using masks and, and making sure that there isn't exposure. That's exactly what restaurants are trying to implement themselves when they keep people socially distanced, when they enforce the masking and when they're doing the cleaning. But objectively speaking, we are still in the middle of an outbreak. We are still seeing a steeper, much steeper curve than we even saw in April. And no matter how you want to spin it or cherry pick the data and, and make yourself feel better about what the risks that we're facing, the risks are still taking place. COVID-19 is not taking a political stance, it's spreading as much as it's able to in whatever opportunity. If there are other areas that we need to be looking at, then we need to be looking at those in terms of disease transmission. And I trust the Public Health Department to be, to be doing that because the Public Health Department has been inspecting all of these places, approved the openings, approved all of the measures that they were taking. And of course, they know what's going on in terms of how businesses are being run. You have to have their permission in order to run your business and in order to maintain it. So I don't understand the dual argument of they don't know what's going on while at the same time saying, well, but we do want to work with them because everybody has been working with them. Everybody has been following the legislation that the, this board passed in order to, to mitigate the spread. And it was successful over the win, the summer because we were able to congregate outdoors. Now that we have a higher level of spread and less business, it doesn't really take a lot of data to suggest that it's happening more frequently because people are indoors and they're spending more time indoors with each other. And so looking at the factors where multiple far, uh, members of multiple families are interacting in the same space unmasked is something that we need to be looking at. And that's why the Public Health is making the recommendation. It's also unfortunate that this is unfairly impacting restaurant staff in terms of their economics, but restaurant staff are also the highest denominator in terms of getting sick at restaurants. They're the ones who are, or having to incur medical costs and medical bills. They're the ones who are taking on the risk of spreading it to their families. One of the only people that I've actually seen in terms of public comment who straight up said, I'm responsible for spreading COVID-19. And this is something that I'm part of was in an email that we received where a young lady uh, uh, admitted basically that she was going out, she contracted it at a bar and she spread it to her family members. These are situations that I'm sure all of the people who are here representing the restaurants and, and who are committed to the dialogue of, we don't want the curfew to happen disagree with, but these are things that we are supposed to be mindful of as Aldermen. We're not supposed to be creating this kind of scenario where people have to choose, single mothers have to choose to expose themselves and therefore their children and their family to COVID-19 because they can't pay rent. We should be doing more to help for stall evictions, make sure that supports are available to individuals. We should be doing that at the city level and not waiting for the state to do everything. And we should be looking at how we can actually help businesses with the resources that we have. We have not been organizing any kind of coordinated meetings for months now. We have not been coming up with any more revolutionary strategies along the lines of the outdoor dining. We haven't really tried. And I think we need to be doing that in order to ameliorate what's going on for restaurants. But we've had the opportunity to do phased in and incremental, um, strategies over the last several months. When the Board of Health wanted to make its pure recommendation on what to do back in Thanksgiving, all of the restaurants that were, that are here were part of that discussion and made public comment. And I haven't really seen that public comment changing regardless of what the Board of Health is saying. I don't think we can shift or, or pivot fast enough to address the primary issue and that's lives. That's COVID-19. We need to make sure that the outbreak that we're experiencing right now doesn't reach a point where we can't manage it and we can't contain it any further. And I think if we don't take action on this, we have two very likely events that are going to contribute.
Sure, no.
Mr. Mathias, please don't speak out of turn.
Sorry.
I'm going to, I'm just going to resolve by saying if people can't even obey the, the courtesies of a meeting, how are we really putting our faith of people's lives in them, how they're obeying these courtesies socially? Everybody has a different opinion, passions override. People are really tired of COVID-19 and all these restrictions. And believe me, I get that. But that doesn't mean that we can just ignore it or turn our, our gaze away. If we have a public health crisis, we need to treat it as a public health crisis and work with businesses that are unfairly impacted the way that they deserve to be.
Alderman Loz.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. And thank you, everyone who's spoken tonight. Uh, there's a lot of really compelling testimony. I, I'm going to be super brief. Uh, I will say that I agree with Alderman Jettie and Alderman Lopez that the numbers aren't lying and there is an issue with bars. But that's all we're talking about right now. What we're talking about is implementing a curfew on bars and restaurants. And I haven't seen any data or numbers that say that there is a correlation there between the curfew and, and those numbers and, and bars being open later. If you're leaving most by a vast majority of the places that serve food and alcohol open so to operate during most of their normal business hours anyway, all day long, you're not doing anything to combat this. So I mean, if you want to have a debate about whether or not we should be, you know, working towards finding some kind of economic stimulus to help restaurants and employees stay home so we can curb the spread of the virus by closing down bars and restaurants, I'm all for that debate. I'm willing to have it. I'm looking forward to it. But we're not talking about that. We're talking about a curfew. The Board of Health, who I have nothing but respect for, I mean, Director Bagley had her, uh, Q-tip so far up my nose this week that scratched my brain. I, I, I finish every conversation I have with her, which are far more frequent than I'm sure she would like with, thank you for everything that you do because she is amazing and I know that they're under a lot of stress. But that being said, them saying that we should have a curfew kind of the same thing as them saying everybody should wear a pirate hat. There's no correlation between the curfew, bringing down the numbers and how it's going to affect the, the COVID numbers in Nashua. It's just kind of a, I don't want to call it a knee jerk reaction, but it's just kind of a, you need to do something because the numbers are out of control. And so as far as the curfew is concerned, I am a hundred percent rowdy against it. No one's made a compelling argument for it yet. So until that happens, that's where I'm going to be. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Alderman Loz. Anyone else that wishes to speak?
Madam President.
Uh, Alderman Tanza.
Thank you. Just, just briefly, um, so I, I am of the opinion and I, I don't support, um, the curfew of this legislation. I agree though that, um, if we could go back and have much more, uh, input from our public health departments and have let them control a little bit more, not just here in Nashua, but regionally, um, and nationally, uh, we would be much better off today, um, than, than we are with the surge. Um, I don't think, you know, everyone expected the surge to come because we are, um, indoors a little bit more now, but, um, like Alderman Loz said, I'm not sure that, uh, just imposing this curfew is going to, um, curb the spread uh, as much as, as we would like, or, uh, it would be as effective as we would hope for. I think it's on the statistics that Public Health showed, um, you know, there are other, uh, businesses and organizations, uh, which are equally contributing to the spread of COVID, um, in our, in our community, um, like gyms. Um, but we're not talking about shutting them down. Um, uh, you know, we're not talking about taking full, full measures um, to really make a difference. And I think that since it would just be effective in Nashua, um, um, you know, people are going to come and go. And if the gym shut down in Nashville, they're going to go to Marimack or wherever else. So unfortunately, uh, this is, I appreciate Alderman Lopez's, um, comments about doing what we can and, and I'm sure there's more that we, we could be doing. Um, I, I think Director Cummings would probably disagree with him that there haven't been conversations ongoing uh, with, with people, um, to try to help and, and relieve whatever pressure we can as a city. Um, but it's really got to be uh, a, a strategy that's beyond just what we can do. Um, to address one other point that Alderman Jettie made about listening to doctors, I just, uh, my doctor would tell you, uh, he's been telling me to uh, lose weight and drink. uh, lose weight and drink less for years, and, uh, I don't always take his advice there either, so I sincerely appreciate, uh, the doctors on the Board of, of Public Health, um, what they're doing. Um, I appreciate, uh, the fact that, uh, Dr. Sapetta, you know, said that their, their view is, uh, public health, um, but I think unfortunately, um, not, or fortunately, our view in the Board of Aldermen is a little broader than that, as Alderman Dowd said, so I will not be supporting this tomorrow night, thank you.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I think to ask a set of businesses to shut down partly, partway through their day makes no sense to me. I think I am against this legislation because they still have to do their planning, their scheduling, their inventory, their whole day's work in, in, in advance, but only to shut down partway through. It makes no sense, and it's punishing a set of businesses for the problem that is much, much, much wider. So I'm not going to support this legislation, I think I, I fully support the Board of Health and everything that they're trying to do, but I think this is not going to help. I, I just don't see the logic in it, thank you.
Anyone else? I'm not seeing anyone. So, Madam Clerk, I believe the motion on the floor is for a second reading.
That motion failed.
That motion failed, okay.
Yes, I thought this was just discussion and.
President Willshere, I do not have a motion on the floor, just a discussion on it.
Thank you.
Will Willshere.
Welcome. Alderman Kelly?
I would move to refer this ordinance to the Board of Aldermen meeting tomorrow evening with no recommendation.
Okay, you've heard the motion, discussion on that motion. Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
No.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Loz.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
You're muted, Linda.
Sorry, yes.
Alderman Willshere.
Yes.
You have thirteen yeas and two nays.
And that motion carries. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion that the automatic meeting of December twenty fifth, twenty twenty, the special meeting, I should say, of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned by roll call.
You've heard the motion, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Loz.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Willshere.
Yes.
You have fifteen yeas and zero nays.
And that motion carries, and we are adjourned at nine fifty-five PM, we'll see you all tomorrow night.